We, I believe, starting section.
Eight.
Two B is what I have. Oh, did you?
Oh, at least he just don't have numbers.
Um, right there. Oh, that's three B.
Strategic planning.
It says, uh, annually as needed utilizing the adopted strategic planning process governance leadership team monitors and reports progress on performance measure. Okay, so let's, we'll continue the conversation there. Um, did this and put it back so we had more time to have this conversation. We'll open the floor up. Does anyone have anything to share on, on this one?
For me?
I do. Um, maybe, and this might be going back to appropriate data, so I see like we have the winter data review that we've been using MAP scores for, I think, elementary and middle. I wondered if we're putting anything about like, uh, and of course test AP or IB performance in any of these measurements. So, we're looking at MAP, which is good, right? We're using STAR to see who's at developing or above, but is there a way that we can or should be using AP performance and IB performance?
I would say end of course tests are directly correlated to the CCRPI because end of course is what is the actual exam. End of course is end of grade. If you're talking about CCRPI, you're talking about the milestone scores and the milestone scores are the EOCs and EOCs.
Go ahead, James. I know you were supposed to.
Thank you. So, I was wondering about board action plan in element one. Uh, what are our action plan? What are?
Good question.
We don't have that, do we? That would be the only thing that I would think that we need improvement on.
Well, let me, let me ask this. Do we, aside from the strategic plan and having the stuff in place to measure, I guess that, that would be.
I def- I definitely think we do only insofar as I had a conversation with Tracy at GSBA. I think led to some frustration because there wasn't a plan in place. It was, it was hard for me to piece together, oh, we do that in June and we're guaranteed to do that in every June. It's part of our plan.
I see, I see, I see.
Um, or the sender, right, if someone gets elected in January, it's like, I want to get everything done. It'd be much easier to say, well, here's the plan in place. We are going to, all things shall be crossed, whereas I think right now it's like, we'll get to it.
Well.
Which is, which is unfair. I think we do have a plan in place.
It would be nice to write it down hand writing.
Cause of, like, some kind of progress monitoring calendar.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, so with the assessment, self, annual self-assessment and action plan, this is my first time doing the self-assessment with Paul. After the self-assessment is completed, I will work with GSBA to identify what would be potential opportunities. With the areas that you said you need additional assessment, so in board retreat, that would be where that content would come from so that you can identify those gaps. That's an example of where there's a board training plan and your annual self-assessment. And this is my first time doing it with you, so I can't say whether or not in the past, but that's, that's what does happen, or that's what should happen after the self-assessment is finished.
I, I think I called this one a needs improvement just because I know a lot of this stuff is in motion, but it hasn't really yet cemented itself in, in place. Like even the balance scorecard, you're asking about student performance data, but there's also teacher survey data. There's like a host of other things that we ought to also be considering that I don't think we really have a true balanced scorecard that we watch on. And so while I, I know a lot of this is being put together, I don't think we're at satisfactory yet.
I think what I talked to, we talked about this kind of briefly, Gima and I, is maybe the first step is to have a more formalized, to James's point, organized calendar of when you're monitoring what. So, some things don't need to be monitored or reported back every single board meeting. Some things like, we talked about, um, conduct or discipline data, maybe that needs to be looked at twice per year. Uh, because you'd be looking at the same data over and over again if you look at it every month and maybe you get more meaningful looks if you look at it twice per year. Things like, you know, when we do this self-assessment, if we do this every, say, you know, January, well, that needs to be on our calendar as like a reminder, you know, January is, you know, is board self-assessment. If we're gonna look at, um, you know, if we're gonna take a, a first read, look at the strategic plan and the KPIs, we need to plan on that for March. But that way we know when those things are due. We know how to pace ourselves. Uh, but maybe that's just a matter of having a board specific, things that are just specific to the five of us, a calendar with those specific things so that maybe it's a month or two months in advance, we can start formulating our questions, get those things to the right people. Uh, but right now, like, my calendar doesn't look like that, but maybe what I was suggesting was maybe like the first of the month, like, there's like a, almost like a, a list or whatever the topics are for that month so that we know, you know, for this quarter, you know, it's, you know, every January, April, September, whatever, we're getting, you know, the performance indicators are this, blah, blah, blah.
You all have seen our board work plan. That's in my evaluation as a document that we use. So, I know, for example, in March, we're going to have the operations update that when it takes place. Uh, I, I know when those things will take place and I have a document that we use that I've also shared with you, but I think formalizing it from a board perspective would be, and potentially making it public knowing that it is subject to change.
Yeah.
Just because, you know, we're pretty much, you know, when SAT scores are gonna come, so we don't really know exactly when the board management, right, presentation. Those sorts of pieces I know and we keep it internal and I share with you all too about, but definitely taking that into account.
I agree. I agree. Cause there was a time when I first got on the board, there was a calendar.
Mm-hmm.
Um, often it got thrown off by other things that would come up. Then it went to, well, we'll just, uh, touch on these things. We'll get a, a report every month on.
Yeah.
Kind of everything. I don't know how necessary that was. There was a lot of information to process when we would get those reports, school reports and.
Mm, yeah.
Right, right, right. And so, but I think that having a formalized calendar, some things, you know, maybe we need to touch base on every month, but not everything, as you said. Uh, there are probably some things just twice a year, maybe twice a month, but I think the formalized calendar, that would be great. And then I would, I would feel better about knowing that we do have an action plan.
And then, can I ask what's about it? Cause I did read it finally. Um, and this, great on their behalf, says focus on monitoring every month. The board needs to spend half its time each month monitoring student performance. So, you know, if we are adopting this, then I think I'm hearing you say like, hey, we know the SAT comes out in, or, you know, October and we know that AP performance is coming out in July and we know IB, so is there a way we can try to build that in?
It, so you'll see when we see the board work plan and those board work things. Okay, for example, I expected CCRPI scores to come out in November or December, but it got shifted one month because the DOE, it's reporting or release or it's unmarked. But in sample model, we know preliminary scores based upon what the DOE does to us and then once we know those, we build it into the plan. But pretty much without a month or two off, we know when data releases would occur, which is why it's so key to have a strong assessment calendar. But not only assessment calendar, but assessment evaluation, meaning how are you evaluating results and what are you doing with them? So, a key piece for me is not only just to tell you what was the performance, but what are we doing about the performance? That part is not.
So, what?
Uh, needs improvement.
Okay.
I've written the notes that we said and come up with a pretty solid action on it there, I think. Moving on to domain three, board and community relations. Uh, there are two parts of this first standard, which is really the developing process for, what, seeking, hearing and valuing input. So, lines of action decisions with board and community culture. And number two is interactions, create a culture in which ideas are sought, heard and valued. Evidence there. Feedback thought on this standard.
I have one question. So, I believe I read somewhere, um, so we're doing our community engagement sessions. We now have our public speaking sessions. What is the procedure for the public? I think the way it was worded was, um, blank, blank and input for agenda items. So, and I think that's worded as a kind of, if not a policy descriptor. So, is there a current procedure for the public to request that we have something put on the agenda? I know that as a board, you know, I would email you and say, hey, you know, I'd like to, on the agenda, I'd need agreement. But for the public, are we just taking their comments and saying, hey, enough people talked about this? Or what's the procedure?
That's a good question. I don't know. Thanks, Julie.
Uh, James is saying close this question to me. The ways in which I've seen this done is if there is a bubble, if you will, a ground swell in the community, if it's something that needs to be addressed immediately, I will address it in my system. Not necessarily, uh, an agenda item. As for example, the RGUs over at high school, when I met with, um, Board Chair Herndon and Vice Chair Salton, it wasn't a buzz last week as we set the agenda. However, it is a buzz right now. Therefore, it's not an agenda item, but I do see it and there's timely response to what I'm hearing or what we know is present. Now, from a community standpoint and their interaction with you as board members, if you do have constituents that would like to hear or know something more about something, obviously they can add to you because then you talk amongst yourselves and then ultimately with the board chair. Chair feels this is something that needs to go on a future agenda. That is how that would move directly from community, which is then went to a board item. What would not necessarily be the community does, we want this as a board item and then I, I add or, or James would add.
But I, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that it may make sense at least to be public about that. Like if, if in the folks in the public do have something they want to see, send an email to the board with that request. We obviously can exercise our judgment as to whether or not that is something that needs to be added, but I, I think. Cause I wouldn't have known until Tracy just asked the question, I wouldn't have actually known what to tell a public member what to do.
Well.
So, they, if a public member, this is all written down though. If a public member comes to my, comes to me and says, I have this complaint, step one is direct them to the person who can solve it.
Um, take it to the superintendent's attention if she wasn't included, make sure the administration, et cetera, respond.
If we get stuff that none of those checked, they're like, you know what? This is a board thing, then we should decide, a majority of us, that it, it needs to be an agenda item for us.
Yeah, I mean, agenda item's a little bit different than a problem that needs to be fixed though. Like that's what I, and that's all I was thinking. I mean, I, I don't, to be honest, now that I'm thinking about it, I don't necessarily have something crop up in my head as a great example, so maybe it's not necessary.
I think it is hard to even come up with an example. I think ninety-nine percent of the things that fall into this are just like, oh, great, let me put you in touch with Billy Heat and Sally. That's actually the correct place to have that as a board member. That's what we should do. And I think ninety-nine percent may be an underestimate of the things we hear.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think most of the time it is day-to-day operations. So, when they come to us with things that they, when community members come to us with concerns or things that they want to talk about, a lot of the time it's day-to-day operations. So, we're able to point them to the right cabinet member that has the answer. Or what I think maybe happened with maybe the lunch issue is that we will decide amongst the five of us that maybe there is a deeper problem to solve and a policy will grow from it or a policy amendment will come from it. And that may not be one, one agenda item, but it will be something that's several agenda items over time, potentially.
Cause what we don't want to do is get over all of these other staff members and things that maybe could have addressed that. You know, they just, someone just said, I want you to talk about, you know, the lunch program, but that, you know, did you talk to the, I mean, yeah, the, the, uh, the school's staff person to try to resolve that issue and so.
I think I was thinking more along the lines of a community member had a proposal of something. So, it's not a problem. I'm not, you know, contacting you because I'm complaining, but more like I have an idea, right? And it sounds like they would contact us and then we would let them know.
Like they want to come present.
So, that, so that's very timely if you look in your email.
Yeah.
There is a person that has presented something.
What I'm referring to.
But that's not a board agenda item. That is someone that has a proposal and they will be redirected to staff to have that addressed.
So, it sounds like effectively when the community contacts us, we are deciding if this is something that we need to address as a board or we are directing them to the people that are.
Well, I think we direct them to the people first, to the staff first.
Well, we're, I mean, so I don't want to preclude that there is something that somebody raises that clearly is a board level issue. Well, I mean, maybe, maybe ninety-nine percent of the time, like to James's point, yes, it is an operational thing. But if somebody raises something that is definitively and clearly a governance question at the board level, we would handle it.
Well, what was that? Like, give me a second.
I know. I, I, what I, I'm trying not to close the avenue of possibility, you know, but.
I mean, the budget, right? I mean, the things that fall under our responsibility is the budget and the supervision of the superintendent and hiring firing, right? And policy, and policy.
So, so in this example, the one that we're referencing right now, it's, this is, that is work that would be considered, there is a direct line to where there is operation of the district. And so, that's, that's an, a great proposal, but it ultimately.
Your operation.
It, it was, it was a parent and a teacher that raised the question of us needing a whistleblower policy that we ultimately took on and said, you know what? That's right. We do want to think about a whistleblower policy. Took us a little while, but we pulled together a whistleblower policy. We now have a whistleblower policy that is absolutely a board question. So, I, I mean, James is right. It's not gonna be super common, but in times that it is common, it's still an email to us. Judgment at the point it is.
So, but A one?
Is this A one and two? I, I mean, I think, I think this is satisfactory. I mean, I, I don't think we're.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Great. B, develops policy to ensure it, breaks that down into communications plan, communicates to stakeholders. Number three is transparent. Number four is consistent with being ethical.
I had to read this again because this has to do with our communication, not necessarily everything at the school level. Emergency respondedness and I think, um.
Yeah, that's the next one, right?
Yeah.
C is the school system. I agree. That was, it took, I was back and forth on that.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, I think everything that, all of our policies are published on assembly. There's always room for people to comment. Um, when Amanda comes and presents policies before we adopt them, we always ask, has there been comments? She always knows the answer. Um, if there's feedback, people come and give us public comment, which we.
There are multiple times that we talk about policies through pre-work session, work session and then there are lots of opportunities for folks to learn about them and develop their questions if they have questions.
And then the same thing too, when we even adopted the strat plan back before Gima was even hired, it was a painstaking process. I mean, there were multiple community members involved to take up multiple revisions, um, and it was very public, um.
I mean, just as a preview into what I'm thinking about this, I thi- I think this one that focuses kind of at board level and governance level is satisfactory. I'm gonna have a different perspective on the next one. Excuse me, but.
We'll jump to the next one. Go ahead.
No, no, no. I think, I think that why it is satisfactory is because we've made some changes around communications. We have a director of communications now. Like, there's a lot of stuff that we've done to try to address it kind of at an executive and a governance level. Um, yeah, but let's talk about the next one.
You mean C?
C, yeah, sorry.
So, this one's just. Stakeholders, no place for that.
And, and, and specifically where things are happening more, communications from the schools to stakeholders and kind of at a, ensuring that we have clarity between stakeholders, the schools and what's going on. I think, um, we have some improvements there that can be done.
How would you measure, analyze communication process?
I would vote to add a copyright position into the budget so that we have some standardization and, uh, professional management of how things are communicated coming out of the schools so that there is a higher level of clarity, a higher level of consistency and less firefighting, um, uh, at that level.
Now, the.
You just asked me for a policy argument that you can.
But this asks for a chain of command process. How they handle communications. They have to be approved. They have to be vetted before they hit the go button. I think they have that. Um, now, where we fall into that is, I think, is somewhat unclear. I think that sometimes, I think sometimes they're sending out these communications rapidly. Uh, sometimes they're sending them out in a timely fashion. So, we talked about that before, you know, where did the five of us fit into that communications chain? Because sometimes they're acting very quickly and we're not around. Um, you know, sometimes they're sending out communications with or without our input, so, which is not necessarily a bad thing. Um, so the counterpoint would be where do we feel like within this chain of communication, we're providing valuable input? Because we could, we could be hindering her with too much feedback.
Well, what I will say is that I know when the stakes are high and I need to make sure I have Chair Herndon and Vice Chair Salton responsible. Now, I will send it to everyone, but I will reach out to the two of you specifically and say, can you put eyes on this? Just because I know the level of states that are, you know, at play. Now, of course, in our board communication norms, you know, having advanced, advanced view of press releases, things of that nature. But when we have a water main break and I'm calling you on WhatsApp and you're supposed to be doing what you're doing and Jana can't do what she's doing if you're trying to get out the house and you're walking to school, um, you know, knowing that I do have that ability to move the communication forward once I have all the information. You help to inform that information and I'm extremely grateful for that. Uh, I will say making sure that we do have community engagement activities, the introduction of our community meeting, the two-way communi- communication vehicles coming, you know, from behind. The D S to actually talk to the community, I really think helps with this. Um, and to have the content fully tied to the strategic plan or the timely topics that we're grappling. So, the first time it was around grading and absence of policy. I will say this time it was nutrition and absence of policy. We don't know what May will bring. We do have a graduation policy.
Yeah. So, I, so where I'm, 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 my point is not necessarily at board level communications or superintendent to board communications around critical issues. It is much more, this last point, point three, it talks about, uh, establishing a process to monitor, analyze, address, resolve the issues or concerns raised by stakeholders. I, I think we have done a tremendous amount to ensure that you have the support and you have what's necessary in place at the Wilson Center. And I still think our communications at a school level are kind of a hot mess. And, and I think that we have not given you the resources to clear that up, right? I don't think we've done that. And so that is where I'm saying some improvement can be made and that is on us. That's a resource. That's a budget resource that we should be talking about.
And I, yeah, I, I, I'm on number three. I think we're doing everything well. Number three, I just, I don't think there's a process to place for us to. To monitor, provide that feedback. Um.
And that's what I was trying to get at with Hans was asking, we could, we can fund stuff all day, but it's, it, how do, how do we say, yep, you did a good job communicating this month? And we looked at this evidence. I think that's really hard. I don't know that we're alone in struggling with that.
I think what the metric that we use is when parents feel like they haven't been communicated too well. So, something happens and they feel like information has not been passed along and then we hear that and then we.
Fine, yeah.
We respond in kind. I also think it is noteworthy that communication is a little, in a, in, in a school system, it's, it's going to be a little concierge, you know? So, for kids that are littler, they communicate in one way, then you have kids at the high school because of the nature of their developmental process and how you communicate with your child, the communication is, um, different. Um, so I don't know how that looks and feels from a call, but maybe getting a better handle on what she needs in order to be successful at the individual school level, realizing that the flavors change as you go from college height up to the high school. And then that may help us figure out how we can get maybe communications or comms feedback periodized, we can weave that into our calendar.
I was just gonna say we should.
I don't know if, that may be something that we could get, something monthly or every other month or whatever a call feels like is, um.
I was thinking that's, that's something that, that should be built into our calendar.
Yeah, I, I can see that. Um, still have a, um, update today. About next steps, we can ensure we're highlighting the ways in which we are seeking feedback on this.
Cause I sent them.
I know, I, I didn't. I will say the texts have decreased, um.
I was out of country.
Well, no, I was, um, extra shout to the, to that everyone. Make sure that signature is in every platform.
Yeah.
Certain things are missing. But, you know, when I send a campus email, it's not gonna pull my Google signature, but we're getting there. We're making.
This was, honestly, this was where I, I had gotten six emails and I did not actually know which child they were referencing because I didn't know what school those emails came from.
You mean like a district email and?
I mean, it would be an email from the school, but the school never said this is from Beacon Hill.
Right.
And so I would get several emails and I would like.
Like saying what?
Uh, you know, make sure you send in the field trip the kids have tomorrow and I'm like.
I don't know. I've heard, I've, I've heard that. And then I, when I get those emails, I've never been confused. So, I've never, I, I don't know, maybe because I have extremes of AIDS, like if, I can, I can, in context, I can figure it out. So, I guess I've never needed it to say, this is from college heights. Because if it says, your kid needs diapers, I got it. It's not Sarah, you know what I mean? But if, I guess I've been able to figure it out contextually, so I've never, I've never.
It's tough. It can get really, really.
So, it's just that it doesn't say in the subject line, from Beacon Hill Middle School.
Like it'll, it'll talk about the, the, whatever, the show performance. And I'm like, is this the high school one that the high school is working on or is this the middle school one that my middle school kid is in?
Gotcha.
I don't know which one, you know, they need me to act on it and there's different numbers that I need to send. I don't know. And that gets tough. It's gotten better, I should say. That's, it's not, that has been, that's been fixed, but that was just an example.
Gotcha.
So, a Miss Smith, I'm just, is a very, you know, name that you see quite often. Very popular, you don't know unless you scroll all the way to the bottom and it says, it, and it will have. It, and it will happen when you're sending a message out at Infinite Campus. A teacher will just sign, "Miss." Well, then it, all the way at the end, it will say, "And this message is being brought to you by Beacon Hill Middle." Which, well, if you have, and this is the unique challenge, is that you have four potential stops in your C S D career. Five, if you include...
Right.
So, if you have four children...
And all of them.
And four different stops.
Yeah.
So, now everybody will have a unique, will have a, a, a templated email signature?
Yes, and that templated email signature lives in Google. But, when you are sending something, what we have said... Probably good that you drafted in Google and attached some of those, some of that.
Misspelling?
First, um, and then if you do that, then you can copy and paste that entire message. So, that's some of the directions that is being given to staff. But, the first step is to make sure your Google email address has...
Gotcha.
The, the standard template that is from all the way down throughout the entire...
Cause that's what I was gonna ask. I mean, effectively, the school could be communicating through Infinite Campus or through the school district email. And so that could explain part of it. The other thing I wondered, and I think it's in that metric that we're gonna see later about communication. We're looking not just at, you know, complaints per se, but responses to communication as well. Like, if you're supposed to turn in your, I don't know, course selection form and only 10% have... It's conceivable there was a communication problem, not a turning in. Okay, so we can build anything we want into this process for monitoring.
And realize that with the process for monitoring, you're talking about communication...
Mm-hmm.
Not action steps on families or students.
Right.
We have to be very careful.
So, on that one...
Needs, needs improvement with comments on getting some of these policies and timing and places. Financial. Domain four, policy development. Week to state today, one, promoting policy development aligned with the strategic plan. Two, adopt, revise, and following procedures. Four, policy development, urgency.
I think this is satisfactory. I think this is the bulk of the work that we're doing, honestly.
I agree.
Right. Doesn't mean it's complete. They were, were in progress, but...
Right, yeah, this is, appreciate the administration and speed at which we've been going about it as well. Okay, hearing nothing more. Domain five, board meetings. One standard here, which is, opens and holds meetings in accordance with the law.
And I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself earlier. This is where it states in description one D, procedures through which the public can provide information, ideas, or input on agenda items.
That's public comment.
Sorry, that's what I was referring to earlier.
Yeah, that, that's public comment.
Okay.
And it's there.
I don't see any issue with these.
No.
Domain six is personnel. Always a superintendent who acts as the executive is the first standard. You can see where that's broken down into six subcategories.
I think this is satisfactory.
I do have one question, and this may be more further in the future than like, say, this year or immediate. For number three, standard C. Um, the board holds the superintendent accountable for assuring that all personnel in the school system are evaluated in according with the school system's mission. So, you know, we're a charter, we've gotta...
You moved to C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I get ahead of myself? Sorry. Okay, that's fine.
Move to C. So, A is satisfactory. Let's talk off A. Is B also satisfactory? Yeah, I mean, we just went through this process.
Yeah.
And so everyone asked for that satisfactory. Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
So, I wondered, you know, I think we're using, or you're using a few different tools to evaluate personnel.
There are. So, the three tools are, the two that are standard law, which are teacher keys and leader keys.
Okay.
And then the final tool is our J D A T tool. And that J D A T is fully aligned to, um, the district strategic plan. It has SMART goals embedded as well as, um, high leverage competencies, staff competencies.
So...
So, those are the three tools, the two that are required by state and then our performance management.
And are those SMART goals aligned with student outcomes? Okay.
That acronym stands for J. Job description, maybe evaluation.
Ooh.
Ooh. Have a right. Yeah, this is a job description. So, all of the SMART goals are aligned with student outcomes. And the only way it would not be, for example, is if you're evaluating, say, a bus driver.
Yeah.
But you are going to evaluate the bus driver upon a key performance indicator that is aligned to their job, which ultimately means the children arrive at school on time.
Yep.
Satisfactory, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Are we receiving any of that information during the course of the year?
Well, J D A T tool.
Either of those three tools?
Um...
Is it appropriate that we do? I, I, I mean, I thought, yeah.
I can show you the tool. There were issues around whether or not people were not being evaluated. I, I have record of whether or not every mid-year is completed, every end of year is completed, every summative, I should say. If, if things of that nature were not happening, then I would raise that to your attention. But, I think it's yours to know that the completion had happened.
Cause just reading that, it does say the, the assure that all personnel are evaluated. And I've, I've heard about it in the past, but it, to your point, it's always been, well, this wasn't done or this isn't complete.
I, we do have, we need support in human resources.
Yeah.
So, we actually have a contractor, person isn't even on, that has to monitor, that monitors that information. Um, because the level of monitoring for evaluation is key. So, not only are we monitoring for completion, but also for quality is that next step. So, as we are updating the strategic plan, the objectives, the K P I's, that's how you then in time make sure that those SMART goals are more in line. Even if you think about SMART goals, we created for me very early on.
Yeah.
Will probably look a little different come next year because I know a lot more about the district.
So, you're suggesting that, just for clarification, that she reports to us when employees' evaluations have been completed to assure that they've been completed across the district?
I read that as something G S B A wants us to be doing. That's all.
And so those evaluations happen at certain times of the year?
Yeah.
So, maybe that could be built into our calendar too.
Sure, all mid-years are completed. I can tell you in the January where it is and then everything that has to be done by end of year.
But it's, it sounds like looking back on the previous, at the previous ones, we're not supposed to be involved in personnel matters except to, except to reject. So, does that mean that we would not, we don't look at the evaluation? You just tell us Beacon Hill, check. High school, check, right?
Mm-hmm.
I still think that's satisfactory, even with the addition of that piece of review.
I, I do as well. I just, I think of, you know, the thing that we're supposed to do before, let's do before.
And I think that had, before G M O year, that had come up a time or two where some...
Yeah. Correct. That's what I'm thinking. I don't wanna only hear about it when it's not done.
Yeah.
Would that be a thing we want added to the dashboard?
Like the public dashboard?
All of that becomes dashboardable. So, that becomes part of the balance scorecard.
Yeah.
So, that's the key of, you're under, hired to retire.
But, I'm just wondering, oh, that seems kinda tricky with us having one middle school that if, you know, at the mid-year mark, all the evaluations aren't done. I mean, it's only a, a few folks that you can identify who haven't done their job. Is that, are we like crossing the line in terms of personnel?
Well, no, we're, it's, I, I would also view it as her fault if it's not that. Like, from our perspective, if it hasn't been done, then that's on Dr. Whitaker.
I think what you're asking is if we have, we're not going to do it by middle school so that you can see one assistant principal hasn't been evaluated and people would know. It's not that level of detail.
You would just say, Beacon Hill...
Check. Green.
Or... I mean, that could, that could be tricky.
It could be a yes or no. And what that threshold would look like because if someone is on leave, it does turn, would turn that K P I red.
Yeah.
You're on leave and I can't give you an evaluation because you're not here because you're on leave.
Well, but I mean, one, one person not having it, like, like, I was, I was thinking it's more of like a percent complete or the whole system, not for an individual school.
Oh, okay.
And like, like, by the end of January, a 75% complete is actually good. We're on track.
Okay.
A 25% complete is pretty bad. We have to figure out what we, that's more what I was thinking, yeah.
That's better.
Yeah, I was...
That's, it's at your level. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Domain seven, financial governance. You have two standards here? Yeah, two. Uh, the first is board, upon recognition, adopts a budget, adheres to state law and its strategic plan.
Can we answer this after we do the budget? I think these are satisfactory.
I, I do have something to bring up, and again, this may be more... So, you know, I understand our budget reports, like, hey, we're spending this much on instruction, we're spending this much on facilities. How are we connecting the budget to student outcomes? And so, you know, for example, I was looking at the archived information on our website about the strategic plan. And, cause instruction is one of our largest amounts of money. And what I saw in there was something about like 50% on instruction. So, it seemed to be a, and again, this is archived information that seems to have informed the strategic plan, not kind of mandate for the strategic plan. But, in the end, I guess I wanna know more about how we're showing that what we're spending is directly linked to student outcomes.
I think it's by tracking student outcomes, right? Like, if student outcomes are not improving, then we're failing across the board on all of them. Um, to, to get down to in the budget level detail, what specific spend drives what specific student outcomes, I think that might be a little bit difficult. It's, it's more, we're putting this budget together and this budget, as we've set it up together, is aligned to the strategic plan and we are going to see the changes in these student outcomes based on it. And if we don't see the change in those student outcomes based on it, then we're spending the money wrong.
So, is that, I don't know...
It's hard, but, because there are some things that that would be impossible.
Mm-hmm.
Like, we just spent $50,000 on some safety and security stuff.
Right.
You could make an argument for like, well, that should improve reading scores because of, but that's gonna be really hard to...
I think I was looking more at like, say, specifically the instruction pot of money because it is such a big pot of money. So, how is it lining up to what's actually happening? I totally get what you're talking about with certain...
To me, that would, that would go to, um, you know, staff and instructional salaries are here. That ties back to a strategic plan of, are we retaining and recruiting highest professionals? Are they happy with what they're doing? You have to be happy to do your job well. Um, buildings, you know, like, do they have the resources that they need in, in this? I would, you know, when, a few months ago, you gave us like the different student spend per student at the lower elementary. That's a great example of what you're talking about where like, I doubt very seriously that you could track that extra 400 per student at, throw one out of Oakhurst versus Westchester down to like, I made those numbers up.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, and improve stuff. So, that is a good example of it. But, you have to be physical and have to meet the goals. And then one of the things we measure constantly is performance. We're gonna, you were pointing that time. Okay.
I think it's, I think it's an interesting point, but it is kind of mathematically complex. I think the other thing too is that, I think we have to be careful about dictating for G M A how to measure performance outcomes. You know what I mean? I think, you know, we can say, "Hey, we want to, we want to see performance in this area." But, how it gets measured is not 100%. We can't dictate that 100%, you know what I mean? We can't say, "This particular test or this particular program." You know, that might be micromanaging her a bit. But, so, and then if we try to then walk that back into the budget and say, you know, "We think this particular program is failing." You know, I wonder how close we're getting to doing her job for her if we started by saying, "We want to measure performance outcomes by this particular test score and this particular test score only." Oh, I don't think, I was thinking more along the lines like, "Show us how your allocation of educators is focused on accomplishing our student outcomes focus goals." Again, I'm new to this. I understand that we report what we're spending. I just thought that there might be a way to start building in a more demonstrable way to show this is the benefit of how we spent this.
So, so this gets a little bit to where I do think we could do a better job, um, as a whole system. What, what you're really talking about is benchmarking. And where if some people are doing very well, what is the, what is the ratio of students to teachers at different grade levels? What is the amount per student spend on instruction by grade level for high performing schools versus low performing schools? Where do we follow that? Right, I mean, so there is a, I, I think there is an element of benchmarking that could be looked at. It's not necessarily always dollar based. Sometimes it's a ratio, sometimes it's other, but, but there is an ability to use metrics. And that gets also to your point. I, I don't wanna say that, that we can explicitly dictate all of the management methods that Dr. Whitaker use, uses. But, I think we can say, "We want to know that it has been benchmarked. We want to know that we are looking at what best in class looks like. We want to know that we are replicating in some of these areas what best in class looks like." If we are doing something new, if we are doing something that's different, that is based on research, we wanna know how we're gonna measure that differently than we've measured something else since we don't necessarily have benchmarks. I mean, I do think there's some, uh, incremental sophistication around that. It might get to your question on how the money is related.
And I, but I also think that traditionally related to curriculum and things like that, there's always an evaluation process of programs and curriculum and, you know, the, the outcomes and if this is working. Like, I mean, I would assume that that's what's happened with ARC.
So, I think what I'm hearing is a true R O I, return on investment model. I would be layered to the budget. Where I have to go slow to go fast. Uh, to introduce an R O I budget into the budget process on top of new appropriate expenditure, on top of identifying a variance, on top of ensuring you have an instructional reserve, on top of modified zero-based budgeting, all in one year. We, those are four big initiatives inside the budget for just this year. But, I think the R O I is key, but I just can't... I think that's where we're going. It, it starts with just a nice little start, stop, continue protocol. Uh, what do we need to start doing? What do we need to stop doing? What do we need to continue doing from a program? What do we need to continue doing from a programmatic standpoint? Just having that conversation. But then how does that move into the budget process? Right now, we talked about it more at an executive level as far as this team is concerned, but to truly go into a ROI and then tie that to budget, that's probably a good year, year and a half. Just in that, and I say a year because the budget is a year from now. Like, next year's budget would include that. But to say that that's something we would have right now, first four in addition to the budget book itself.
Not a, not that much work, is it?
No, I would say satisfactory.
I'm sorry, that, B is, but, but E is the, are you being legal with the, what it says? If you read them, they're like, you better be doing those.
Last one is ethics, domain eight. We have one standard here. It's here's to adopt and practice the code of ethics to avoid conflicts of interest. Reviews those and their effectiveness. So we all have to sign the code of ethics each year. G S B A handles that.
What is the con, what is the conflict of interest policy?
I think it would be like if I am part owner of a construction company and then
We are approving bids.
we're looking at building a school and, am I wrong?
But do we have one?
That's one, clearly, you'd have to refuse yourself.
I, I, I am refusing conversations about our bond.
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
I'm not, because I sell and own some Decatur school bond. That conversation has come up in the past.
My, I don't know.
Do we actually issue our bonds or does that go through the city?
It goes through us.
I thought it was that.
A GO bond, though, those GO bonds are held by the city. But these, the, the chi.
Okay, the cops are the ones we're talking about, okay.
Okay, that's satisfactory.
Yeah, I think so. Want to have something to disclose there?
Well, I mean, I, yeah. What, uh, what board tells itself it's not ethical, that's very weird. Well, the way they have it written too, it is the like, you know, have you read the state model code of ethics? Have you looked at the professional standards commission? Have you outlined any conflict of interest provisions?
For action planning purposes, needs improvement areas are those areas that we'll talk about by into our curriculum moving forward and into our board retreat training as we have support coming from our various vendors that provide.
Do you have notes on what needed improvement from the first two domains?
I probably do.
Can we skip some time to?
There are no.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now we'll turn it over to her.
Well, real quick, we are not discussing the book this month, but I want to say it out loud. Jana, next month, part two, step three.
So then you're thinking cap.
Hmm, and then you, Tracy, you'll be April for step four.
No, it's a teacher list, it's kind of like, she's like, y'all haven't done it right yet.
All right, so we're up for the next new business discussion.
All right, are we ready to talk nutrition?
Yeah.
Policy development. So that is the next step here in pre-work. So I've provided you a folder. I'm going to go over this with you. My role today is facilitator, so I'm going to be facilitating a protocol with you to work on the policy development content for nutrition policy. Um, as you are aware, um, this came out of a community need, out of a need. So we are all aware of the eighty-eight thousand dollars in debt. Thank you to the Arby's Foundation, um, who helped relieve that debt. Um, we know that there, that debt had been accruing over at least five years and there was a substantial increase to the debt following post-COVID when the government, the federal government, um, no longer fully funded it. That's when we saw the biggest increase as well. Um, so again, it illuminated the need for policy development, so that's what our goal is today. We do have a current policy E E E. It is one of the required policies. It is more broadly a wellness policy. It does say that we will have student wellness and proper nutrition, proper nutrition are related to developing growth, development and readiness to learn. This is something that exists throughout Georgia as one of the required policies as well. And just a reminder that as we're working today on the policy development, we have to stay within the federal nutrition parameters. Um, we have to know that the school nutrition program is a self-funded entity of the district. The revenue that's earned goes to pay for all of the school nutrition expenses, including payroll. We know that meals must meet USDA nutrition requirements, our guidelines, and that the funds received contribute to the quality of meals and the purchasing of equipment. So it's just important to help this three months as we work through this. Just so you know, when we draft policy, multiple steps, right? One is we identify which policies need to be created. Done that in this case. We do research. We've done that in this case. We've looked at benchmark districts. You've become familiarized with some of the different policies throughout both Georgia and the nation. Then we work on identifying, including the key elements of the policy and then creating the content. That's going to be where we're focused today. What are the key elements that we need in our policy? And what do we want the content around those key elements to be? After today, there's still obviously going to be opportunities for revising, reviewing. Legal is a big piece of that, for example. G S B supports with that, G S B A, and formatting. And then, of course, as we move through our regular policy process, we'll move towards approving and publishing the policy as well. So today, we're kind of honed in on the steps about, um, the key elements and what content is going to go in those key elements specifically. So again, I'm the facilitator today. Um, I do have at the front row here kind of some of our experts. So we have kind of the budget perspective here, the superintendent perspective, the nutrition perspective and the legal perspective. So that if there are clarifying questions that need to be addressed or we're veering off course with some of our content, they might give a little whoop, like, let me just kind of remind you of some of the things that they know from their fields of expertise. That is not to say that we might catch everything. So as we work on drafting this and go through the process, we might get additional feedback that might, we might need to bring back to you to consider. So this is just the first phase, all right?
Good question.
Yes.
Um, for our parameters here, for using both funds to purchase any large nutrition equipment or does everything have to come out of the nutrition budget? Like, if you need a new oven or stove or something like that? Okay. So what equipment, um, are you referring to here?
Well, talking about, um, oven, dishwasher.
Smaller equipment.
Smaller equipment.
Is that what you're meaning here?
No, so that's large equipment.
Okay.
Large equipment, like oven, dishwashers, um, refrigeration.
But like shaping dishes, spatulas, those sorts of things are not going to be.
Coming out of.
That old spend, yeah, they would be, they would be something.
So smaller equipment comes out of the nutrition budget itself.
And, and just so, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm very clear. Eighty-eight thousand dollars was not able to be funded out of the nutrition fund ultimately because it had turned into, uh, extra annual debt. And in cases where the nutrition fund is not able, for whatever reason, to cover the cost, ultimately, it is the general fund that backstops that. And so, and so, I'm going to get to word of my policy things that we're going to talk about, but at the end of the day, not paying for student meals, if parents are not paying for student meals, it's putting in a, in a position to take resources out of the classroom, pay for those meals. Right, we should be extremely explicit about that trade-off.
Yes.
All right.
And it also, so our nutrition, our nutrition staff, their salaries also come out of the separate nutrition, but.
Some of them, not all, we have about seven hundred thousand.
Correct.
We are moving all of that, the, the nutrition for fifteen year twenty-five and if needed, we'll transfer.
So at least seventy percent of their salaries are coming out of the nutrition budget, not the. Seven hundred thousand. Thank you. But it does help fund their salaries.
Can I ask one question?
Uh-huh.
So with regard to free and reduced lunch, because it is a, um, federal program, are we bound to that dollar amount? Or, and I'm not saying anyone wants to do this, but if we, you know, currently free and reduced lunch, um, eligible students would get this, if we wanted to have a buffer, are we allowed to do that or does that overstep the legal?
Yeah.
So if, you know, if the level is.
The threshold for free and reduced lunch, we cannot control.
Okay. But I think what I'm asking, and I, I don't mean to propose it if we don't need it, is if a school district wanted to have a buffer, so if free and reduced is maxed at twenty thousand and Decatur wanted to say thirty thousand.
We don't collect income by family.
I, I think I got it.
Yep.
All right, so our first step that we're going to do is what I like to call identification of the key elements. These are the key elements that might be included in the policy that we want to discuss. They are based on the research that we have conducted. So after sharing the key elements, I'm going to ask you all if there are any proposed changes or additional key elements that you want to have for the review. So if you're following along with me, I'm on now the back of page one, on page two. Right? So the proposed key elements of the policy would be an introductory element, which is just explaining the policy, the purpose of the policy itself. Element one that came out through our research would be to address meal charge. Essentially, are charges, are charge policies allowed and if so, under what conditions? In this one, we would talk about things like what are the limits for students to charge? Whether or not we're going to charge? Are we going to differentiate by level, elementary, middle, high, adults? Things like that would be addressed in the meal charge. Element two for discussion would be alternate meal if applicable. So our key question there would be, shall an alternate meal be provided? And if so, what expectations are there for this? Element three centers around communication with families. Many of the policies we looked at explicitly outlined what communication can take place. So that would be what communication with families is expected and what is its desired purpose? And then element four would be specifically addressing debt. So how are we going to address debt in a fiscally responsible and sustainable way? Are there, I'm going to give you a minute just to reflect and think, are there any other key elements that we might need to discuss in the policy? It doesn't mean that they won't come up. It doesn't mean we can't have them later. But any proposed changes to these key elements or others that you do not see?
Can I ask a clarifying to your point? If we were to pay for an alternate meal, then we would be taking money from the classroom.
Yes. I mean, any, anything that we, that is larger than the nutrition fund takes funds out of the classroom. Um, the one thing that I'd like to see, so I think what you're meaning here with communication with families is principally around, like, if they're, if they've been charging or if they have a negative debt or if they have, um, I would, I would like some detailed, uh, question or maybe it's some clarity under communication around how we are, aggressive isn't the right word, but how we're very proactive about ensuring families that we suspect qualify for free and reduced, are provided that option and.
I think there'll be an opportunity for that to come up, but let's make sure that does get captured.
Okay.
Oh, I, what was I saying?
No, you go ahead.
Um, I was looking at the cap counties. They have, um, a section on prepayments and refund and refunds and transfers.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't addressed, we haven't addressed that. I think that would be helpful information to add.
All right, so payments specifically, so, and that kind of ties into us with some proactive. So that might even tie into communication, but I've captured, so we can make sure we capture that.
Okay.
Actually, that, so can I, can I take you back on that? Because that's a really important point. I think that meal charge isn't, that sounds to me like point of sale meal charge. But we already have a system where we do prepayments. So I mean, that's what we're talking about. You can charge in advance and you charge against account. What we mean here is if your count is at zero, are you able to charge against that? So that's, that is the extra, so there is an element zero dot A to Jana's point around you, you're able to pay in advance.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
They have a whole separate thing and then refunds and or transfers.
Yes, and I have that in the notes too.
Thanks.
Um, do we have, this question for, uh, donated, do we have any idea how much alternative meals have cost the district in the past? Because we did have alternative meals in the past, pre-COVID. Um, and if it, it's pretty clear that if we had alternative meals, the district would not charge the child, so we would absorb the cost. Do we have any idea how much that has cost us and would that come out of the general fund?
But to be clear, the school nutrition fund on an annual basis will be running a deficit, even if we don't add any of this stuff. So it is going to ultimately come out of the general fund and net it.
How much though? Do we have a general idea of how much, roughly how much that had cost the district in the past? It was a trash, okay.
Also wasn't tracked and now we can track it. We can put a button on there. I could see, um, was the, um, how many are being sold and then I can see what that price is.
But do we make those ourselves or are we selling a prepackaged alternate meal? We make it ourselves. So, I mean, we know what the cost of the bread and the cheese and the labor is. Like, we can make a quick estimate on roughly what it would cost us, right? Cents, I mean, it's not going to be hundreds of dollars.
Seventy-five cents per meal in totality.
So, on the order of, what's the milk? About a buck an alternate meal for every citizen, yeah.
I believe very fully that this is a problem of a payment system and like signing up for it. As a repeat offender myself on running deficits, there was a lot of frustration with the payment system. So I won't, it's hard to say like, you don't want to write a policy like this is how the payment system will be written. But I would love for it to review to make sure that we're, that we're using the best, you know, not overcharging people for e-cards. Setting it up to where, I think someone shared the like, uh, how does your peach pass work? Where like, they just randomly take a big chunk of money out of my credit card? I'm like, where did that? Oh, okay, because I've been on my, you know, I, don't get me started on those bills. Um, to me, that should be in the policy. That like, we're, we're evaluating it, we're communicating it to new parents. Um, because I heard a lot of people that are like, I didn't even know about the lunch changes. Um, and that free went away and that that's where that debt came from.
I, I think that we ought to have an element that is explicit about what we expect the payment system to be able to do. Not necessarily how it's written, but you should be able to charge in advance. You should be alerted before you're negative. It should have an auto pay option for auto fill if they want to do it. It should, I know y'all are going to hate me, but it should not be a fixed, you know, four dollar fee for a credit. It should be a, a charge plus percentage. It, it should be, like, it should work away every, the same system in the modern world works, right? Like, I think we should be explicit about that.
Right, so we're getting very much into the content. So I think this is going to definitely come up, which is great. Um, and there are ways to write that at the policy level specifically, so definitely there's.
That's one, I think to change this, is currently, is this built into the beginning of the school year? Because I would be the culprit who gets some I C announcement about updating data and I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. Nothing's new. So is there a way to build that in? It's not just new parents, but it's part of the beginning of the year process. And I don't know if.
But an onboarding or something.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
You have, the students have an annual data.
That'd be content, right? Yeah, because I was going to add.
So as we're getting there, before we go too more, much more deep into content, I think it's important we take a moment to identify our priorities, right? So what I'm going to ask you to do is to think about what are the priorities that you as a board or the values that you have as a board have made or committed to that should drive. that should drive the content as we talk about each of these key elements? So for example, you should be thinking about the strategic plan. You should be thinking about priorities you gave when you hired superintendent Whitaker. Some might not apply. Literacy as a priority is not going to apply to the nutrition policy. However, organizational excellence and effectiveness might apply when we're talking about fiscal sustainability and transparency. All right? So as a board, you've created a strategic plan and you have some key values. You've just talked about some of them in your self-evaluation. So think of one or two that really are gonna be what's driving this policy. So as we plug in and we think about content, we continue to say, does this align with our values as a board? So take a minute just to think. I'm gonna do my teacher wait time. The note catcher, if you wanna jot it.
I have two.
Okay. Two. Shouldn't be more than one or two. We're gonna have to come to, come to, come to some consensus on how we're gonna prioritize the state of- All right. Start.
So, like, just out of the gate, I think we need to just have a process in place where that annualized debt doesn't get to accrue so that we're not back in a place where eighty-eight thousand dollars is sitting on the ledger that we have to solve for. So we should just, on an annualized basis as a part of the budget, make the transfer so that is wiped out.
All right. So what I hear you talking about is fiscal sustainability? Is that how you would categorize that?
Yes. And that's gonna get to my second point.
Okay. Go ahead and make it and we'll go around.
But the second point is actually, it's rooted in a value statement that I think is kind of important to be explicit about. I was pretty annoyed with the tone the community took around how they couched equity in terms of the way the policy worked before. And I am very much of the opinion that if you truly are committed to equity in this district, pay your darn kids' lunch bills so we can keep those resources in the classroom rather than have to pull the resources out of the classroom to pay for rich kids' lunches. Like, that I find very frustrating. And it should be clear that that's what we're talking about. If the general fund is required to subsidize the nutrition fund, and it's going to be to some level, but the more we require the general fund to subsidize the nutrition fund, the more we are saying we are going to pull resources out of the classroom that are actually serving kids that have needs and put them into the mouths of kids who can afford lunch and just aren't paying for it. That, in my mind, is a value that we need to be explicit about percaling in this policy.
Excellent. So fiscal sustainability as well as equity as defined by making sure we're allocating the resources essentially from our budget based on what I hear is like-
A need. Yeah, an actual need as opposed to a perceived need.
All right.
I was gonna say transparency. I know that was something that we really discussed a lot when we were looking at hiring a new superintendent. And so making sure that this policy is very clear on, you know, how we, how students can get lunches and what's available and blah, 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 that it's all right there and accessible for everybody to have that information. And then equity in the sense that, you know, I think having this information and so that parents are informed, you know, who may not be clear on, yeah, yeah, what's available. And so, you know, when we get down to the content, there was something that I saw in South San Francisco's policy about the information that goes out at the beginning of the school year. And so I think that, you know, in terms of equity, making sure that everybody, you know, has access to this nutritious meal, that they have the information on how they can get it. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's a, we know largely which kids we ought to be targeting for. Right? I mean, like, we ought to be talking to those parents. We ought to be doing that out.
Right. Board chair.
I mean, I would ultimately like, we, we talked to the representative. I would love to be honest, that would be a priority.
Right? I would like, I think first and foremost, because I'm a, I'm a pediatrician in my core, I think all kids deserve a, a healthy breakfast and lunch. I think they're counting on us, you know? I think they, they're, they're counting on these ladies to provide food for them. You know, we can't, I feel like it's tough because we can't make a judgment call on what goes on in their homes when they walk out the door. You know? I, I don't know. I only know what goes on in my house when my kids walk out the door. And, but my kids have a deficit. It's because probably I forgot. I'm sure that happens some of the time, but I don't know what happens all the time. And I want to see that all kids have access to, to sustainable meals. Now, the practical side of me knows that that's a function of having a sustainable nutrition program. We cannot, we cannot operate if we don't have a functional nutrition program. We can't, we can't operate without money to pay the vendors. So I think we have to operate within the framework that we want all kids to have that. But how do we make those two things coexist? So it, there may be some difficult things, some things that we don't want to see idealistically here. But realizing that the key to sustainability and longevity in the nutrition program and being able to provide that breakfast and lunch that those kids can continue to rely on us and for school to be a safe place is that this program has to have longevity. And I think the other thing too is that, I think there are some kids that we're missing. I think there are some families where English is not their first language. I think there are some families that do not realize that they qualify for, not just free lunch, but they qualify for reduced lunch. Although that is not in the purview of the school system. We don't keep their financial records. We can only help them fill out the paperwork. I think we have to figure out how we can reach those families, even if we pass out free and reduced lunch forms by email and then in paper the first day of school and then every day for the first week of school. I think we also need to build, you know, maximize on what we've done here with Arby's and build some better community partnerships to build like a, a, a fund as a runoff. Because this is not a new problem. This is not a Decatur problem. Lunch debt is not new, a new issue. It didn't just create itself here, you know, within this past couple of weeks. I think we need to start to think creatively with our community partners, like the D E F and other school systems that have been successful as to how we have a reserve for the families that are kind of, that may, that may need more help to kind of get into James's point where maybe we can get out of the alternative meal plan, understanding that right now we may not be there.
I think they've said everything. I mean, my first was students should be able to eat. My second was that they shouldn't be singled out. And then not conflating money and food, looking at opportunities for those students. Because again, my concern is that while people have the money, they just don't know. And I know that it's been an issue, but that any way that we can make sure people understand how to do it is gonna benefit the students.
All right. So kind of a lot of different things, some that have a little tension, right? So we'll have to keep that in mind and discuss that. I did hear equity in several different versions kind of come up. I heard about sustainability and long-term and come up. And I heard access and, you know, healthy kind of, kind of things come up. It's kind of like the main three that a lot of the others kind of fit under. Does that feel fair to say? Okay. All right. So what we're gonna do now is we're gonna talk about content. And we're going to look at each one at a time. And what happens is, I'm gonna just kind of move us along here. We're gonna think about where, what we want to say for each of these. And again, we thought about our values. So if you actually look at page four, I've got element one, which is the concept of a meal charge. So what I've done is I've pulled some language from various policies. You, of course, have also been researching and looking at various policies. These are just samples all along the continuum of what different policies might set. So what we're gonna ask you is, are charge policies allowed? And if so, under what conditions? So you can read these sample statements. You can modify them. You can adjust them. You can combine them. You can think of your- We're not worried about the wordsmithing as much. It's what is the concept right now around student charging? I'm gonna look at that. Think about what resonates with you and what you want, what you want to see in it. And we're gonna quickly popcorn, it's not one, it's not A, B, C, or D necessarily. It's what's the combination and the key things that I want to pull out.
That's a quick question, Amanda, before we start. So I was looking at the, um, kind of the template that we started off with in terms of the proposed key elements.
So I, yeah, keep going.
So I noticed that we're not starting with the purpose of the policy.
So that's funny, good observation. Very good. I actually have that at the very end.
Okay.
Um, because I know that this was more like part of the meat of some of it, where there might be some contention with the values. So I wanted to start here. I did put that at the end because typically that's gonna be more along the lines of the value statements we just discussed. In order to maintain fiscal, you know, sustainability, we recognize da, da, da. We also value that all children should be fed, you know? So we'll start with some kind of value and we have to be in accordance with the school nutrition program under federal guidelines. It's usually like the legalese is kind of the-
Okay.
All right. Part of my job as facilitator is to also keep us moving. So I know we're, we're tight on time already. So we are going to real quickly throw out there, under what conditions? Charge, let's talk about students first. Not an explanation, just where are you? Let's see if we're close to consensus or where we're starting. So what resonated with you? What do you believe?
I put on my sellable, eligible for free lunch program or Decatur's food assistance program. Students are expected to pay for meals prior to or at the time. And then you move into the allowance of a certain number of charges.
Okay. Go around.
I think they should be able to charge and it should be based on the date, not the amount. Because if they ain't got money for breakfast, they're not gonna have it for lunch either. So I think that's when we get into a tricky situation for-
So do you have an idea about how much you want to allow them to charge? Or charge indefinitely?
No, no. It should be a cap on the number of days.
Number of, by day.
But I don't think it should be based on their, their, it shouldn't be based on dollar amount. It shouldn't be based on their financial demographics, because we don't know that. But if they come in with no money, they should be able to charge for that day, the full day. When they get past three days, then we probably have to start to put a barrier on it.
Okay. Jane?
Agree with that.
Okay. Gina?
I just had a question. Tracy said if they qualify for free and reduced lunch or Decatur's food assistance-
I just made that up according to, I think, what Carmen and I would like to see. So that's, I'm sorry. It can't be written right now, but that would be a hope.
So one of the things we'll kind of put on the side is, is there an opportunity to identify a way to support students through additional donations or donation fund or things like that? Who might not meet the free and reduced criteria? Did I articulate that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. But that, that's not something we're gonna consider right now because-
It, it would be part of the content potentially with the funds, with the relief of funds or things like-
Okay. All right. And I agree with everything, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with the days. I think it's three days elementary, but with a triggered call to parents after the first day. I think it's one day at the middle school with a trigger call to parents after that first day. And I don't think it happens in high school. And I don't think it happens for adults at all.
I agree with not charge, letting adults charge.
Can I add one thing though? Is one too limiting in the event that like, I don't know, someone's sick that day? Like, I'm not trying to be pedantic, but, because I like it.
I'd settle for two at the middle school then, as give them an extra day. But I think you want, I want to start, you know, getting them ready for-
I don't agree with not, I don't agree with not beating the high schoolers.
I, I don't agree with that either.
Not allowing us to get a charged meal.
I think three days for, for everybody.
That's, that's why I am to-
Yeah, I don't, I don't make that at high-
I don't agree with, I don't agree with letting the adults charge.
No, I don't either.
We all agree no adult charge.
Right.
All right. One thing.
I could do three elementary, two middle, one high school.
Tell me why you're cheering it as opposed to just everyone.
Because I think it's different. There's a different level of, actually hold the kindergartner at the same level of responsibility that I do at 12th grader. And it is incumbent, I think, at some point for them to own it. Again, I'm, I'm not viewing this through the lens of kids that-
Can't afford it.
Can't afford it or really need it. Like, there is a thing where we have to be putting in place all of the stuff where that is sorted. This is for my kids. If I'm not paying attention, that's my fault. Like, I should not be pulling the resources out of the classroom to feed my kids. Like, I need to be paying for my kids.
I think that Hans does have a point. I think we have to be fully acknowledge and transparent that they, some of this is rooted in some behavior issues at high school.
Yes.
It's different at the elementary schools. That's 100% of the time that's, you know, a different thing. But sometimes this is, you know, can I borrow your lunch money? And that's the lunch number. Can I, you know, walk through the line? The lunch lady says you don't have the money and you continue walking through the line, which is, you know, a behavior issue. Is the solution to say you don't, you only get one day? Because then wrapped up in that are your, are your students at DHS that probably legitimately are some of the ones I talked about that have fallen through the cracks here. So I don't know if that's the solution. That's kind of, you know, taking a huge hammer to a nail. I don't know. But I think, you know, maybe some of the conversation with the community has to be in full acknowledgement that some of this is, is a behavior issue at high school.
Are we able to track by days instead of by amount? Is that doable from a practical perspective?
Let me ask it this way. If you don't believe so.
I don't believe so, but I would need to verify with our current system. I do not believe we can track it by-
Let me ask, let me ask it this way. If we did three days for all, but elementary has the option at the end of the three days to get the alternative meal. At high school, at the end of the three days, you're done. We've given you the amount of time. Like, you need to now take responsibility and pay your bills so that you can actually get a lunch. I don't mind viewing it through this lens. But I, I mean, I, I think we need to have it in this. I feel that there is a value here that we need to be clear. The bulk of our problem, the bulk of that eighty-eight thousand dollars was not under-resourced children. Those were extremely well-resourced children that we need to drive a behavioral change, parent and child level. And I am not comfortable pulling resources that are serving actual children with needs in the classroom out of the classroom in order to subsidize the wealthy kids that are just not paying attention.
The other, the other thing I saw here, which I don't know, I don't know, and one of the other policies was kind of like you said, day one is a, is a letter or, you know, you get a daily notification here if your balance is negative. But after three days, then a social worker is involved. That means you're sending your kid not only to school with no money and no food. That toes the line of-
What?
Negligence.
Yeah.
So in some school systems, three days of this, the social workers get involved. So-
I'm totally good with that.
I am too. And I just wanna make sure I clarify, if you receive free lunch or reduced lunch, you won't get an alternative lunch anyway.
That's what we're gonna-
Never.
Yeah, that's-
Then, yeah.
Um, I wanted to comment on Alacart sales. So Alacart sales, if you have a debt, you have one to purchase an Alacart bill. It's not going, we're not, they're not actually gonna buy that item. So if you have $10 in debt and they have $5 in cash, that $5 in cash is gonna go to that $10 and now they're gonna owe $5. Not actually. Ice cream, that plays a part into, I use ice cream, but then I think about my high schoolers when it comes to, they love to buy extras, they'll, they'll want a snack. You know, the football team will buy a couple of extras, TV and J. That affects them on what purchases they can make. That would be why it's harder to track by, by day because it's really the charges that you're going to get at Alacart.
So I'm sorry, can you clarify? So if, I don't, because I have one child who's, who's an offender with ice cream. That's, that's our debt problem, so.
You get my kids to stop eating ice cream.
So if you, right, so if you have, if I have 10, if I have $10 in debt and I come to school with $12 in cash, so you're saying I would just be able to buy the meal, but I couldn't eat ice cream itself, but if I walk through the line with it, you would still give it to me because I already pulled it out of the freezer?
Ice cream, ice with a pizza, those are not meals. But right now, we are going to give every student a meal because we don't have an alternative meal policy, right? So they are getting a meal, they are going to get a full meal, they're going to get the entree, the sides, the milk. It's not considered a full meal. They're not going to get that because there's no way for you to pay for it and you not have over what you owe. So if you owe $10 and you brought $12, $12 that you could purchase your item now, but you're not getting any change back.
Speaking as a parent, I don't mean to make this really hard, but I would love to see this. Is it possible, set it up so that you can prepay a certain amount for meals and a certain amount for extra charges? And I mean, I, so let me say it this way, I know that there, it, this could be done, whether our system's allowed or not, I don't know. But like that starts to solve our problems. If the kids want to do a lot of extra charges, that goes to zero and that, I don't have any problem cutting that off.
Maybe then what you're saying is if they have a deficit, if they're below zero, they can get the base meal, so the meal itself and the milk, but they cannot do all the extra charges.
Apparently we do not allow students to be owed money to make purchases.
Already we're doing that is what you're saying.
We're not, we're basically just giving extra items. But for your essence, if you don't want your student to buy ice cream, give me a call and we're going to put a notice on there that this student is not allowed to buy extra sales. So we can block that and I can check to see with our system if it's possible for us, because I've come from other systems. So we have, there are systems out there, which I'm looking into, where you have a general account and you have like a, um, an extra sales account. So it's a meals account in the general. It's up to the parent on what they want to put on. I want to put this money in the general, they can use this $10 for any purchase or for your student, you can put a certain amount on their meal account and that just goes for purchasing meals and nothing else.
And then, and then what, what that allows us to do is if that child is going through the lunch line and they have a deficit, but they have $5 in their hands, they can't buy ice cream, but they could with the $5 buy the meal, it doesn't get added to their debt. Like we could allow that to happen, where, where we can, we can continue to allow meals to go with the child. They can buy it in the moment that they're there. We can stop the ability to buy ice cream or whatever else they have. I, and it just, I think that that starts to get at the ability to bifurcate some of these issues.
Okay, because you brought it up and I didn't think about it. So, I mean, are we basically looking at the fact that we have to include the additional food items with the meal or looking at the policy? Because otherwise, I go to get my ice cream with the $5 and I'm excited, I'm going to get three ice cream bars and instead it's like, no, you owe us $7, so goodbye, no ice cream and you still owe us $2. I mean, are you effectively saying that the add-ons right now are in the meal debt?
That must have to be right.
If they was making more, we put this in the budget.
So we are, yeah, very, very much, we're going to have to stop. I know we're out of time, but I want to stamp this one if we can. I've heard no adult charge. I heard that we do expect, uh, to give some grace to students to allow to charge up to, we got to look into the days. I did not hear a consensus on the days necessarily. Free for elementary, everyone seemed comfortable with. If we can't do days, we might have to be able to put that into the dollar, translated dollar amount. Um, but then there was some talk about middle and high, so where do you want to land on that?
Well, I want to say also, I think that there was consensus that, that free for elementary with parental engagement as it happens.
Perfect, yeah.
Right, like so that we know that there is.
But your question is?
For middle and high school, where do you feel as a board around the allowable, either we're going to say days right now, but we might need to edit to be amounts? Should it be the same as the elementary or should it be differentiated?
I mean, in an ideal world, it'd be different, but I teach high schoolers and, you know, hey, the Chromebook wasn't charged. So I'm just not comfortable right now. Again, in an ideal world, I totally agree with you, but in this world, right now, I'm not comfortable saying it's different.
I think they should have three days across the board. I think maybe the, maybe where we could add some breaks to this is what we do with, um, the communication and then what we do with this alternative meal. Maybe the alternative meal is actually for the littler kids. Maybe after three days, the high schoolers get nothing.
All right.
I could compromise.
And I was saying that, let, let's say we can't do it by days, but then do we just stick with what we have in terms of three charge meals equal to this amount for middle and three charge meals equal to this amount for high school?
What we can do is, is put it, translate it into the dollar incentive that would be equivalent to.
And, and the dollar incentive.
See, that's the, right, because.
Yeah, if they're not getting breakfast, they're not getting.
Yeah, if you don't have money for breakfast, you don't have it for lunch either, you know?
Okay, yeah, no, so I, I missed that, so.
That's why I was saying days instead of dollar.
Okay, yeah, I'm with days.
But, but we, what we can do with this policy is if they're charging over an amount, basically deficit charging, it is only a meal that they're getting, they're not getting anything else. We can be very clear about that. Okay.
All right, so we're going to stamp that part for now.
Read it back to us so that we know what we're talking about. Wait, wait, I would just, we're saying three for all, in every case, when they start to go deficit spend, a communication or some sort of engagement happens with parents. Elementary at the end of the, middle and high school at the end of the three days, no alternative or just high school.
I don't know if we've covered that part entirely yet. That's kind of leading a little bit into the next section, but you've got to, going ahead already on the communication piece and thinking about alternative meals.
You know, it's one thing, it's not related to policy, but my, um, kind of dream of Decatur's food assistance program, where can we?
Think that'll come in.
You've given it a name and everything.
With you and continue to think about it and.
That's what's going to happen.
Um, we will work together to figure out kind of how to, how to pursue forward. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. I think I'm good, I think I'm done.
All right. Hard out, sorry, y'all.
Oh, it makes sense.
Valid, it's a valid.
All right. Anybody new slides? All right, I have one more thing. I'm with you guys next. Normally you would be up there, but I'm here.
Just stay here, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll transition between pre-work and work. Um, but there is, um, one policy that is on our pre-work agenda as well today. As a reminder, policies that are presented during pre-work are new business, we're seeking your input. These policies are presented as initial drafts and again, they're being shared to gather your input and feedback that can be reflected in drafting or revising future versions. So today, we will be seeking input on Policy DB, Planning, Programming and Budgeting System. This policy is being presented in response to, um, Voice to Board Priorities and it aligns with our Strategic Accelerator on Organizational Effectiveness and Excellence. We've worked with our financial consultants to draft this policy and partnered with GSBA to identify the correct policy code. Our legal team has also reviewed this initial draft. Policy DB, Planning, Programming and Budgeting System establishes in policy the production of an annual organized and comprehensive budget document that reflects the most recent board-approved budget of our district. Informed by our financial consultant, this policy explains the purpose of the budget document and that is to provide policy information, serve as an operation guide and financial plan, and is a comprehensive communication tool for the district stakeholders to include students, parents, staff, constituents, and elected officials. The policy outlines four major sections to be included in the document, the executive summary, organizational section, financial section, and information section. The executive summary highlights essential information contained in the budget, providing an overview for all users. The organizational section includes the district organizational and management structure and policies and procedures that govern the budget development process. The financial section, section three, presents budget data by summary and detailed levels for all financial funds managed by, CSD. Description of revenue sources and expenditure needs are described in that section. Finally, the informational section includes information from employees and the community such as local taxes, student enrollment and demographic, the academic calendar and staffing information, cost of education, and department overview. Essentially, this is your budget book policy. So at this time, we would love any board input or feedback that should be considered for revision to the policy.
I think after the executive summary, you need a management discussion and analysis that is much bigger than just, like the summary is like a two-page summary of this is what happened. There is an MDNA that really goes into, these were the five major strategic things that we've worked on this year, here's the outputs of what some of those are. I mean, I.
And manage, yeah. In the beginning of the budget book, who are going to talk about specifically, is this, how does this budget align to this strategic? So, yeah.
So you can call that as a separate section really, and MDNA is what I've heard it, but there's other, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that kind of potentially.
Well, and this is the thing I think I was going to ask and I think, I'm sorry, I probably already know the answer, but I want to confirm this. So the policy outlines what's there and then what we might want to define as information can change.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that conceivably, if we wanted to look at like, okay, this percent of our funds is generated from QVE and this percent is generated from local, and then if we wanted to eventually start looking at, these are the physicians that are funded through QVE, these are the physicians that are funded through local, those are additions not to be written into a policy?
Correct. That would be what it looks like in the actual information. This tells you what would be included in the, in the document itself.
Thank you.
Man, I'd like for the glossary, one of the things, but I've said it before, we get little charts, it'll, it'll have sections and section, but most people say, well, what's included in that section? Um, and I think a glossary that went to that, that, well, we defined, you said teaching and learning last time. Okay, what, what all does that include? Can we break it down? Seems like that would need to be done, done once, um, or maybe that's what the glossary is and if that is the glossary, then I would want to get rid of if necessary and just always include that glossary.
Okay.
Education, we love our alphabet.
Love it, so. Can we make sure that it has page numbers and a title of contents that leads to the page numbers?
Color coding.
Yeah.
The cities is color-coded and it's.
I don't think that level of detail is going to, but yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, it's serious. This is wonderful, by the way. Um.
And how often do you anticipate this has to be updated? Because things like.
Annually, annual budget.
Mm-hmm. So with the budget, with the budget, all of this would be, if the budget is passed, you would update this following it?
Gotcha.
So I encourage y'all to look at like Paulding County, for example, does a really good job of this. They do a really concise budget book. A lot of the metro area, for some reason, don't do it particularly well. Paulding does a really good one. And then cities are required at a different level. If you look at Decatur's budget, for example, it's exactly, it gets presented exactly this way. Much easier to look in and say, all right, so what are each of the department spending? Why? How does that link to the overall strategy? What does the mayor think? Like it's just there, it makes so much easier. Only 12 minutes left on schedule. This, by the way, is the, I'm sorry, we're setting people take a little break. They have restroom meetings and other stuff.
Have to be back.
It'll take five minutes, so 3:28, 4:00.
Does anybody want to get some, get some candy? I have to go. Well, I'll get the candy, you go to the bathroom. If you could get like a M&M.
Can we, can we have the kids? I'd like to access your.
I'd like to access your.
There. Alright, thanks for joining our monthly work session. Dr. Whitaker, introduce the first presentation.
Yes, thank you Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Ms. Tara Smiley, interim career technical and agricultural education director. Her presentation will highlight our CTAE program as this, as February is CTAE month.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Solsen, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. I'm here to highlight the accomplishments and approaches of Career Technology in Agricultural Education Program. Career Technology in Agricultural Education and the Decatur Career Academy have experienced tremendous growth thanks to the vision and leadership of our previous career tech director, Mr. Dewayne Sproul, who now serves as the principal of Decatur High School. Growth extends beyond a limited selection of tech classes to offer a comprehensive career academy that presents a college preparatory curriculum integrated with the career theme. This approach allows students to grasp connections between academic subjects and their particular application across various professional fields. Additionally, we actively partner with employers, community leaders, and local colleges. We have been awarded several competitive grants since inception in 2009. These grants are awarded to develop programming, fund renovations, provide software for students, and professional development, leading to computer science endorsements for teachers at Beacon Hill Middle and Decatur High School. Dual enrollment at the Decatur Career Academy became a staple in our programming once the partnership with DeVry University, known as the Advanced Academy, was implemented. From 2011 to 2018, nearly 80 students earned an associate's degree under the guidance of the partnership at no cost to their families. The partnership is being reignited to include computer science certification programs for students for the upcoming school year. The early college partnership with Georgia State University began in June 2019 and provides our low-income, first-generation college students, students of color, and Black males additional support in the dual enrollment setting. Students have earned over 2,000 hours of dual enrollment credit through these partnerships. In the 2223 academic year, the Georgia Foundation for Public Education, Georgia Power Foundation, granted the Decatur Career Academy a sum exceeding $20,000 to enhance healthcare science programming and awareness. These funds played a pivotal role in growing our certified nursing assistant cohort initially comprising of four students. Through a collaborative effort with Drew Charter and Georgia Piedmont Technical College, the program has expanded threefold to accommodate the maximum number of 14 students. In March 2022, the Decatur Career Academy earned Georgia College and Career Academy certification as mandated by Senate Bill 161, which is a rigorous process to demonstrate a high level of governance and leadership, strategic planning and sustainability, teaching and assessing for learning, and economic and workforce development. Our academy, the Decatur Career Academy, is the only certified academy in DeKalb County. Georgia has maintained its status as the top state for doing business over the past decade, largely attributed to the role played by college and career academies in bridging the gap between industry and education. As early as sixth grade, our students in CSD engage in five career tech connection courses at Beacon Hill Middle School. These courses align with the 11 CTAE pathways at the high school. Pathways that prepare students for careers in specific industries such as architecture, healthcare, and education. Students in our early childhood pathway get hands-on, real-world experience, caring for the children in the Fraser Child Development Center. Likewise, students in our teaching as a profession pathway intern with teachers in classrooms throughout the district. Currently, we have 12 students in our K-2 schools and six serving at the upper elementary and middle schools. Thanks to our business partnerships and affiliation with the Decatur Business Association, our IB career program students obtain high-quality internships with industry professionals during their senior year, allowing them to continue learning in a professional environment. This year, we have 38 candidates for the IB career diploma. The work-based learning program for pathway completers to continue developing their skills once they've completed three courses in their chosen pathway. For example, architecture students have interned with engineers in the City of Decatur Public Works Department, and culinary students have worked as sous chefs in many of our local restaurants. Work-based learning is also available for any junior or senior who wants to gain employability skills and earn some cash. Last full year, 85 students worked a total of 16,000 hours, earning over $154,000 in wages. That's a conservative $617,000 economic impact that our students made just last year. These are a few examples of how we are positioning our students to meet the needs of the community. At the heart of career technical and agricultural education are pathway completion, end of pathway assessment, and attainment of credentials of value. In the previous full year, 144 students successfully completed their pathways and passed the corresponding end of pathway assessment. Additionally, students achieved industry-recognized credentials of value such as Adobe Certification for Graphic Design Professionals and the Rabbit Certification for Architecture and Engineering CTAE provides equitable access for all learners. Dual enrollment is another distinct and equally valued avenue for our students to pursue personal and academic growth. This year, we have 76 students thriving in dual enrollment, early college, and accelerated career diploma program, earning college credit and technical certificates of credit at Georgia Piedmont, Georgia State, and Georgia Tech, to name a few. Again, I'd like to express gratitude to Mrs. Sproul for the recent addition of the dual enrollment coordinator to our team. This role held by Ms. Lewis has been instrumental in managing the incredible growth with weed experience this year. Ms. Lewis's dedication has not only been transformative, but has also led to a remarkable 130% surge in initial interest. That's evidenced by the recent registration. Ms. Lewis has gone above and beyond, meeting individually with each student to understand their aspirations and guide them through dual enrollment process. Her personal touch has been drive, been a driving force beyond the success, behind the success of our program. Furthermore, I'm thrilled to share that during a visit from GPTC, or Georgia Piedmont Technical College, on February 8th, Ms. Lewis facilitated meetings with over 50 new students. These students are now keenly interested in the opportunities available at the Clark Student Campus, particularly in the areas of automotive, nurse aid, and welding. The enthusiasm generated through these interactions speaks volumes about the impact Ms. Lewis and the dual enrollment program are having on our students' educational journey. The Strengthening Career and Technical Education for 21st Century Act was signed into law on July 31st, 2018. This bill reauthorizes the Paul D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, or Perkins Act of 2006. Its purpose is to increase the quality of technical education in the United States, providing necessary funding to expand opportunities for every student to explore, choose, and follow career and technical education programs in study. Through our most recent comprehensive local needs assessment, we identified two opportunities to improve our program. We needed to modernize equipment and increase students' membership and participation in Career and Technical Student Organizations, or CPSO. We used our certified program improvement grant funds to purchase equipment for our audio tech lab and allocated a portion of those funds to increase student participation in our CPSO. Students who participate demonstrate higher levels of academic engagement and motivation, student engagement, career self-efficacy, and employability than their peers who do not. CPSO participation has increased by 80% in the last two years. Our students are not only participating in local and regional competitions, but they are winning and advancing to state. Friday, February 9th, our teachers took 33 Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, SUCLA students, to compete at Region V Star Competition. 22 will advance to state. In the fall, Dr. Whitaker invited several community partners and thought leaders to gather and envision an innovative future for all students K-12, CSD. We are looking ahead and collaborating with industry, associations, educational institutions, and government agencies to design relevant curriculums to provide early career exposure to students as early and often as possible across all disciplines. You can see that Career Technology in Agricultural Education is intertwined in all four of our strategic accelerators. CTAE champions the diverse pathways that lead to success for all students. CTAE demonstrates organizational effectiveness by being accessible and intentionally designed for active student engagement and learning. Our program holds the distinction, again, of being certified by the technical college system of Georgia. May program in DeKalb County. CTAE provides ongoing professional development with C-Turn, which is a career tech teacher resource network for all veterans and new career tech teachers. CTAE promotes student success in all areas. In 2022, our graduation rate was 98% for students completing at least two career tech To commemorate Career Tech Month, we are delighted to showcase some of the remarkable items crafted by our students in the program. The gifts you have before you were designed and produced by students in the graphic design pathway, by infirmary pathway, and of course, the sweet treat is provided by our culinary students. This concludes my CTAE report. What questions?
I love this. I, I was not ready for college at the end of high school. And ended up being an electrician, worked as an electrician, and that, that work is what paid for my college when I ultimately did end up going to college. But it was classes like this that allowed me to follow the path of my career as an adult. So I just, I think this is absolutely fantastic. Quick question, in terms of how we access or communicate to, for example, rising eighth grader, or, I'm sorry, rising ninth graders, current eighth graders that are thinking about going into high school, how do we communicate to them about these options and availability of some of these programs?
Absolutely. Every year prior to registration, the registration season, which opens in February, we go over to Beacon Hill Middle School, the career tech teachers, and our students who are in year three of each of the programs that are represented. We go over to Beacon Hill Middle School and share the student experience, we talk about what the program entails, the three courses, and the, again, scaffolding from level one to level two, and what it really looks like, with an understanding that year one is gonna be really split work, but then the fun begins year two and year three.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think this is awesome. Thank you. I'd love to, um, I do have one question. If a student, like Constance was saying, hey, I wasn't ready for college, and I've seen over the years just the cost of college and then committing time to it, can a student be in two pathways? Like the CTAE pathway as well as another? Or is there a point at which, like you said, the fun begins second year, right? If you're split work, the graduation rate 98% with two CTAE elected?
So where our scheduling is built, students in ninth and 10th grade have limited essentials for two elects. So students can take culinary arts and early childhood education and possibly complete the pathways if they decide not to, you know, opt for dual enrollment or IB diploma. Now, let me say about IB diploma. Students are still able to complete a pathway. In IB diplomas, students have one elect that's available, which they can continue in their chosen career tech pathway. Your vote.
I was gonna say, thank you. My youngest son, the heart did, yeah.
He was in my work.
No, I remember. He did work-based learning with, I think it was Georgia Public Broadcasting, and had a phenomenal experience. He also got the Adobe Certification, which he probably puts on all of his applications with, in which I think has helped him now that he's working out in LA and in the entertainment industry. So, it's just a wonderful opportunity and thank, and the gifts are so, I don't know if everybody's seen our gifts, but with our initials ones, it's really cool, but thank you.
Thank you. I'll share them with our students.
Also, one of my kids is dual enrollment, and having the dual enrollment coordinator has been such a phenomenal addition to your team. And, you know, I think this is, I think it's, I think a criticism of the high school has been that if you're not an IB diploma track, if you're not an IB student, that you don't fit in. So I think it's, I think it's important to highlight that 98% graduation rate is phenomenal, and that they feel successful and find their way, and I'm very proud of, so I think that goes to the youth of your team, and I want to say that for a while, they kind of felt like paying for, kind of, longer now there, but now it's, it's awesome.
Thank you all for sharing.
I, I took part as board member in the certification process two years ago with Principal Sproul and the facility, that's what I wish all the parents could go and see, like, the media center and stuff, and the culinary students were down there working in kitchens. It's really an amazing opportunity. Thank you for all you all are doing.
Thank you. Thank you all for your continued support.
If we, if I wanted to take the class, does this stuff, it's not something that you let a parent do.
They don't want me on the front row. Actually, yes, Mr. Archer hopes in the fall, a community workshop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Great.
So, Chair Herndon and Board, I just want to let you know that CTAE actually provides equitable access to IB rigor through, you know, the career program. And so additionally, I want you to know that our tote bags were curated by the graphics design students and engraved fine furniture, and then finally, that sweet treat of a cupcake is provided by our culinary students in our CTAE program. So, thank you so much. Ms. Smiley for your leadership and support.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Thank you all.
Our next presentation?
Yes, thank you Chair Herndon. Ms. McCall Hart-Marunga, our chief communications officer, will provide a communications update.
Fortunately, I don't have trees.
In.
I have to follow us. Remember that next time. Good afternoon, Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Solsen, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. I want to begin by thanking you, the board, for approving my position and the creation of the district's first designated communications department. Communication department resides. The communications department resides in the newly established office of the superintendent, where we provide strategic communication and legislative support to and for schools, other administrative departments, the superintendent, the board, and the community. The work of the communications department aligns with all four of the All Indicator Strategic Plan Accelerator, but directly works to assist in building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture. All right. Thank you, Esther. During this communications strategy update, I will outline the goals and strategies for direct our work, examples of our efforts during the department's inaugural six months, an overview of how we are beginning to measure the effectiveness of our efforts, and a few upcoming communications projects. The communications department was established by Dr. Whitaker upon her entry into C S D in response to this board's determination that communication should be one of the three primary objectives or focus areas of her administration, the other two being instructional and organizational leadership. The specific communications goals as provided by this board included developing a strong relationship of stakeholders, creating systems and structures for two-way communication, professionalizing internal and external communication, and centralizing communication. We were also asked to do a better job of telling the C S D's board. At least after the offer of my position, the communications team arranged the coverage of Dr. Whitaker's wearing gear by every media outlet in metro Atlanta and the annual off-air opening day event. She also planned, publicized, and actively participated in Dr. Whitaker's listening sessions as part of her ninety-day G gym entry plan. During the gathering phase of the gym plan, the feedback and brutal honesty we received was quite common, but proved critical to defining the expectations of all stakeholders and outlining the blueprint for how we would successfully execute C S D's communication. Earlier, I used the term designated communications department because I want to honor the work of communications that was previously done by individuals in the Washington Center and each school. However, there wasn't a strategic and targeted approach to the work for a designated department to focus intentionally on the brand management, marketing, and stakeholder engagement of C S D. With all of this in mind, the first part of the strategy was to begin with N, starting with introducing the new communications department to internal stakeholders and underscoring the importance of our collective efforts in managing the brand of C S D, telling the C S D's story, and ultimately leading and being all-in for ensuring positive student outcomes for all students. To do this, I put together a presentation I call Communications One-on-One, which introduces the team and the services and the support we provide, including managing C S D's brand and reputation with consistent, clear messaging and high-quality and professional standards, managing the communications channels, including the district's website, social media, and newsletters with a focus on equity and inclusiveness in context. We also launched a new platform, the C S D Words with Dr. Whitaker Podcast, responding to media and stakeholder inquiries and proactively pitching positive stories, consulting with departments to develop tactical communication plans for new and existing programs and discoveries of growth opportunities, managing district's food-based crises and emergency communication, producing the B O Es, meetings and district legislative priorities, and creating collateral materials, reports, and graphics to increase transparency and the communication of information. Also being more intentional about being more inclusive in our communication. Examples include showcasing the diversity of our students, various levels of professional and support staff, and the vast array of academic and extracurricular activities, as well as the translations of district announcements into six different languages, such as Mandarin and a bit of Farsi, Spanish, and Quechua. Communication One-on-One also explains why the communications department was established and how we work with schools and with each department. Finally, the pre-assertion reiterates our collective responsibility to ensuring safety and security. In short, if you see something, say something, along with how and to whom you should say it. I presented Communications One-on-One at one of the first admin staff meetings. I have since provided communications moments at the monthly meetings and a front invitation to support staff and other departments to underscore the need for us internally to work cooperatively in our work, working with one band and one sound. In addition to presentations with staff, we have audited our district's website and app and other platforms with materials with plans to improve them this school year. Since then, we have begun executing our work through internal and external communication. This slide illustrates examples of how we are working to build stakeholder trust by professionalizing communication. What you don't see here are the many speeches, scripts, videos, letters, press releases, food-based communication, social media posts, crisis response emails, magazine articles, reports, and other communications our team has created and distributed using our various platforms. You also don't see the loss of follow-up internal support the communications team provides to underscore the relationship between professionalizing communication and brand management. We summarize this in four terms. For Dr. Whitaker, we have an acronym. Yes. Content matters. Affinity is crucial. Timing is key, and finally, success is in detail. We know clearly communicating the who, what, when, where, and how in a timely manner with attention to being inclusive and culturally sensitive are essential to successful communication. And the point, presentation is everything. I was there to mention, as Dr. Whitaker said earlier, that starting February first, a consistent district-wide C S D Gmail signature was pushed to all staff and set as a default, thanks to a collaboration between the communications team and I P. Email signatures are just one identifying factor of C S D's brand, but are a great way to get families and staff to easily incorporate our brand into everyday correspondence. We have also created indoor assistance facilitating two-way communications with stakeholders. Examples include adding a designated communications telephone extension that actually hunts. So if one of us isn't there, it continues so that someone answers the alarm. Coordinating and promoting the superintendent's seasonal listening sessions and the board's limited lunch community meeting, establishing the superintendent's advisory council, coordinating and encouraging stakeholder feedback through surveys and webinars, providing timely responses to stakeholder inquiries and requests, and newly established C S D communications email communications at C S D Kator.net, which to date has received nearly eight hundred emails. I should note, this is in addition to the personal emails and chats we request to receive daily. Our team also hosted C S D's inaugural and hopefully annual legislative lecture, enabling two-way engagement between youth, the governing board, and each member of the CAB delegation, the mayor, the county manager, and other distinguished city and county officials around the district's twenty-twenty-four legislative priorities. This two-way engagement continues as a result of our team's arrangement of one-on-one meetings with these and other officials. In addition to the district and schools, the communications department provides extensive communication support to youth, the board of education. Now, I could spare the next hour highlighting our crisis communication efforts within the past few months, but I'm sure we don't need to relive them. We've had national nutrition news, severe weather, water main breaks, gas leaks, and school evacuation all within the first month of this twenty-twenty. While I don't think, like I said, we need to relive them, I do want to take a moment to inform families and staff about our approach to communication during crises. C S D depends heavily on local, counties, and state agencies for critical information to make decisions and provide time-sensitive communication to families and staff during emergency situations, including all that I just mentioned. While every effort is made to obtain timely information, the responsiveness of these agencies is out of C S D's control. We understand and lay known that I disrupted the families and staff. However, please know, we are working often times to make informed decisions about school operations in the absence of the needed information. I also want to underscore that in every instance, the safety of students and staff is our top priority and will always be at the forefront of crisis decisions and communication. In addition to developing a blueprint for communication, our strategy includes creating metrics and identifying tools to measure the effectiveness of our engagement efforts. This slide shows we are making strides in our engagement strategy. This slide is a comparison of August first, two thousand and twenty-two, through December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and August first and December thirteenth of last year. You see that we for Facebook have increased by almost nine thousand, uh, increase. We see August first through December twenty-twenty-two, we saw an increase of, I can't do math, I do letters, but fifteen thousand Facebook, uh, minutes in our reach. We also had an excessive increase of ninety-four percent in Instagram, in our Instagram. I was at my point. Anyway, you see that we've increased significantly. We also are measuring our impact using similar data from the website, as well as from surveys, feedback, audience participation numbers, daily emails, and parking lot conversations. Those are our favorites. This may evoke a chuckle, but we also measure the silence after we send a communication as an indicator that we got it right. We'll take the small... Again, this is a start and an update on what has been done in the first six months towards assisting in achieving all of the All Indicator Strategic Accelerator, specifically building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture in C S D. We continue to welcome and seek opportunities for improvement. As we look to the next couple of months, we will begin to work more at the school level as capacity allows to provide additional support. Here are a few of our upcoming projects. Projects will propel us forward in accomplishing the board's outlined communications goals. We see this as a foundation and a necessity for this year, so again, we can focus our efforts more at the school level. Even through visually enhancing C S D branding, we are establishing the communications advisory committee, website, which Dr. Whitaker loves, redesigning and officially launching the district app, updating our district and school crisis manuals, creating collateral materials such as the budget book, the annual report, and a press kit. This will be a substantial lift for our team, teachers, moms, and mites. We will work collaboratively, collaboratively with our respective schools and Washington City Department as... But on much of it, however, from a capacity standpoint, additional support will be needed. I will end at I D N with a thank you for approving the mid-year budget adjustment, which will expand the communications department's capacity in completing these projects before the beginning of the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. Thank you. You have any questions?
So what else do you need from us?
Well, I enjoyed the discussion earlier about the capacity of our team. One thing I wanted to jump in and say is usually when you're designing communications department for the first time in two hundred years, you want to focus on internal and external communication. And part of that internal support is district communication, departmental communication. And usually you have a person who focuses just on school, right? We have a wonderful social media person. We have someone who's exceptional in legislative sphere. I have managed the district, uh, communication with them, or timely, that's been my line. And so I was very much appreciated as you look to the future budget and the opportunity to add one person to our team right now that, like I said, is a consultant that will focus on these group communications.
Any measure, you're doing a good job communicating?
Well, one of the ways we do is through our metrics, our analytics that we have.
Yeah.
We also like the adagro that we receive and we walk through. We found it has changed astronomically since the first of this new session. We get emails. We have gotten nods from youth as a board. I know that the media has also, the more that they print our story, when we can get it out there, there's an indication that we're moving in the right direction there. And then we have just been overwhelmed by the support of my colleagues on the cabinet and departments, the board of schools, on their reception to our support. You're going to help me with that email. I remember one of my favorite was working with, um, Holly. She had some needs of the investigation at her, that investigation at her school. So we put together a nice little newsletter, uh, clip, to assure everyone that in environmentalism, we're moving easy. And then we hope that they will be happy wherever they live. So we work as granular as that. And also, like I said, when we have to do the crisis and the district's open, the feedback that we receive through analytics and analytics.
Thank you. I know that was kind of an academic question, but I value your opinion there.
What is the most meaningful and straightforward way for you to get feedback from stakeholders in the community? So if they have feedback about the way that you communicate with students, what's the best and successful way to get meaningful feedback for you to make positive changes?
One of the ways of C S D communication that is...
Just email you.
...to emailing us, C S D communication, that is, uh, I said, we almost used a thousand in just this monthly thing here in communicating that. We also require the feedback from Facebook. We don't necessarily encourage that if it's negative, because we are trying to work on things. But, you know, we have the feedback that was, that the best way is wanting to do C S D communication because just like the telephone, that comes to all of our emails, and we do our very best to do the right thing. I think a lot of parents have been surprised that when they email us, they do get the rest of the problem. You're a little uncomfortable.
I just want to say thank you to you and your team. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, board, thank you also for approving the chief of communications position for this budget. And this team is in need of support. So hopefully, you will approve additional support for the communications team in FY twenty-five.
Thank you. And we have another presentation.
Yes, we do. Chair Herndon, I would like to call on Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, Deputy Superintendent. She will provide an update to the board and the community on the grading regulation to accompany the policy that was adopted in December of two thousand and twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Solsen, team members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. John Whitaker. During our September board meeting, I presented a brief history of the grading practices in C S D over the last ten years. This overview highlighted where we've been, current practices, concerns in certain aspects of grading, and the need to establish a grading policy. Rating was also the primary topic of the board's first community meeting this year at Kator High School. Where parents, teachers, and administrators engaged in a discussion primarily concerning grade from averages and bonus points. In that session, the board identified essential revisions for our high school grading practices and set forth to develop a grading policy to take effect for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. An essential part of the feedback received was that parents, students, and some of our teaching staff were unaware of the need for these changes prior to the start of school year. We acknowledged that and sought to improve upon our communication and management of change. Though it may not have felt like it, knowing that our grading practices needed to change was the easy part. Implementation is much more difficult because no matter how good and compelling the rationale, there will always be active and passive resistance, rational invasions, debate, and distraction, particularly when the changes require new ways of doing things. To manage this process of developing a grading policy and writing regulations, we're using a change management process called A T C R to guide the work. The A T C R model is an acronym for the five outcomes an individual needs to achieve for a change to be successful. A for awareness of change, of a need to change. B desire to participate and support the change. K knowledge of how to change. A the ability to implement the desired skills and behaviors. And R reinforcement, sustaining the change. This model will serve as a guide to continue the development of grading regulations to accompany on our new adopted, newly adopted grading policy. At the onset of this presentation, I reviewed how we informed our community of the grading practices that needed to change this year and made them aware of the policy that will take effect next school year. Our Chief of Staff, Amanda Lynch, led us through the grading policy development in the fall of June on September twelfth, twenty twenty-four. We had tremendous amount of input from our community on what was desired in the grading policy. We surveyed parents, students, and staff with seven hundred and fifty-three responses. Overall, the feedback from the draft policy called for a change in us and our grading scale for grades six through twelve, greater clarity for how M Y P and D P courses would be graded, and clear guidelines for the opportunities to retake assessments. In addition to the surveys, both Beacon Hill and Decatur High School devoted a staff meeting to give feedback about grading in response to these questions. What are your clarifying questions about the grading policy? What are your probing questions about implementing this policy? What recommendations would you like to make? And what resources are needed to implement this policy? The responses to these questions serve as the foundation for crafting our draft of the grading regulations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The development of our regulations will capture all of the thoughts from the staff in these three areas. The first being criteria, which outlines what gets recorded as grade, what will be used as evidence of success, how will we handle retake, and the use of the K twelve or the standard in each subject area. For method, will answer the question, will we be allowed to give zero? Will we give weight in formative and subjective grades? How will we use the one to seven scale for the former courses? And then for processes, will answer the question, when does reporting happen? How often are we collecting evidence and checking progress? What systems and resources will best help us? And what training will be provided? The key teacher outcomes will be that our instructional staff will have the knowledge, skills, and ability to implement the K twelve toward the standards and the I V curricula for each subject area. They will know and understand the intended learning outcome, develop rubrics with criteria for success clearly outlined, utilize varied types of assessment as evidence for learning, provide frequent communication of student progress toward mastery of the standards through infinite campus, and be able to explain and implement the grading policy and its regulations. Our next step in the development of the regulations will be to complete the draft by the end of this month. We will have in March our instructional staff to provide feedback for revisions. At the end of March, the regulations will be finalized and shared. For April and May, we will conduct assessment training and refreshers on best practices and understanding how these best practices align with the regulations. June, we will do a test run of all things with our school leadership. And in July, we will do the infinite campus teacher training and information for staff and families to include a handbook, video, screenshots with directions for all to use as teacher references. The process of developing grading regulations has provided valuable insight into what is valued by students, teachers, families, and our school leaders. The ability to concede, implement, and sustain change is crucial for the overall well-being of our district, particularly in ensuring a transparent and informative grading system. Fully embrace and equip ourselves with the necessary tools for effective change management, we will, we being members of the cabinet and our K two principals, will participate in change management, management training in March. The Pro Sci training is a proven people-focused approach to cultivating an agile change-grading organization. This training will provide us with the essential support for the changes ahead, both in grading and beyond. Thank you for your attention. Are there any questions?
That's your problem with the first one. I think I was a little guilty. Um, thank you very much for that. Um, there's a lot, this is a big change, right? This is a big, um, change. Um, what, okay, thanks. Where, where are you worried about stuff breaking? Um, and where are you, you know, trying to prepare your team to have to be really quick on the response, right? Stuff's going to go, let me, any change that's always going to happen. What, what really makes you worried and what should we be watching out for, um, to help support you?
What makes me worry more than anything is, um, our infrastructure, making sure we have systems that do what we, we can do. Um, and like you said, things don't always work perfectly and we can problem solve, but we love to have fewer issues and more issues. When you have those issues and you're implementing something new, it just lowers the confidence that this is the direction we need to go. So that stays at the forefront. So that test run and checking and making sure that the things work, that we have the right system.
What were the dates for some of those real, like trial by fire initial tests? When, when was some of that main stuff going to be happening over the summer?
Yeah, it's going to have to happen over the summer because if you tinker with things right now, then it's definitely going to cost us, it's going to go haywire while we're in school, and then we don't want that, right?
Can, can we not, I don't, I don't want to get too down into the weeds here, and that's, I'm sorry, I'm starting to ask questions that are maybe more directed at you, but can't we set up dummy systems or?
There is a sandbox.
Okay, that's exactly.
Yeah, so, so any type of change in infinite campus is to create a sandbox environment in the sandbox before transitioning it to live. So that type of sandbox environment has already been created, but when you're talking about changing a grade once it's live, we need to ensure that rollover has occurred. We need to ensure that the master schedules at our high school number one and also the middle school are solid, and then for next school year, then you start to then take everything over to infinite campus to go into the live, um, live process. One of the things, I know I, I mentioned support with the communications, but a lot of the work and even in what you hear around change management comes out of a P M O office. And we don't have a P M O in our school system, but to have true change management, and we're talking about infinite campus change management, grading change management, we're talking about a new H R and budget system change management, just there are lots of different systems that we will be upgrading and changing. And I really think it would be beneficial for us to think about that in a human resource perspective, because yes, I know Pro Sci, I know A T C R, I can take any type of change through a A T C R model, and I am looking to build the capacity in that type of executive functioning across the cabinet and even in the K two space. There's a reason why I didn't say three twelve, I'm not going to leave them out, but they get something separate. But no, that is the type of executive capacity that we're missing that was part of my ninety day fund. So when I talk about, um, how do we build capacity for our staff, it's not only around instruction, and believe you me, that's our bread and butter, that's what I do, you know, by trade, but the executive functioning to lead change that is reinforced and sustained is how you alleviate the start stop. When we say things like, oh, we are turning back on Tableau. What do you mean? We had Tableau before. Oh, it was a start stop. What do you mean we're turning back on our district act? Oh, why? Because it was a start stop. The ability to really have a robust change management in P M O office, um, office I E started with just one person, is a valid need in our district.
And do you, do you think as you're building that capacity out in your team, because that, that, that capability should reside with all executives?
Exactly.
Right. Is, are you thinking that that's a permanent role or a multi-year? Are you about to give us a budget presentation that's going to include some of this?
Oh, yes, I think you will, you will, um, include some of this.
Okay.
So, yeah, uh, the budget presentation will include what would be support for three areas. One for project management, two for communications, and three for human resources. Those three areas, it is a better presentation because change management and project management does not stop in two years. What, what tends to happen is you are now moving on to a different project. If you're in my office, there are chart papers that literally are posted notes of project charters that are going into the next five years. If you're looking at a true strategic plan over a five-year plan, you're not going to start everything in year one, which we're in now, or year two, which will start next year, and think, oh, by year five, we'll be done. Certain things will start in year three that we know will bleed over into the next strategic plan, but the capacity for the school system to actually implement that with fidelity, I need to ensure is in place.
Thank you for this. Uh, I see Dr. Whitaker answered one of my questions earlier. You know, my concern as a teacher, I score A P S A, so I have to accommodate, you know, learn how to adjust to a rubric at a nine, but in my classroom, it's out of a hundred. And so, you know, my instinct was going to the classroom and the teacher. What does this look like if you have Decatur teachers that have been operating on this one through eight scale for their entire career? Um, I see that there's assessment training in April and May. Who's producing the rubric? How easily can we take, uh, one through eight rubric and adapt it to a hundred scale? Um, are we also asking for more assessments if we're scoring differently? Because I'm thinking of that kind of, uh, adjustment in addition to the infinite campus.
So those are things that we will hash out with the school reports now. Um, I wouldn't be able to stand here and give you a clear answer for each of those things, but I will say that when you survey the teachers, um, at the school level, majority of, of them wanted to go to this change. There were some who wanted to stick with what they have, um, but the majority were ready. And if you look at some of the practices that are currently happening, they are more on a hundred point scale, right? And some of that has been matched by the one to seven. So there are some things that we need to change, and there are some things that we have been using in the name of one to seven that then we can transfer over to, um, the one hundred point scale. But it's going to take a list, and everything won't be ready day one. It will be a work in progress, but we do need the teachers to engage in that work because they're the ones who will be.
But one other, and this may be at school level, you know, I know an eighth grader who, um, when learning about this scale said, wow, I'm failing math next year. So the weight questions, you know, in terms of what's a passing grade now, what the standards are that we want for students to be able to, um, demonstrate and those grades socially answered within the school and the subject department.
That's work that we'll engage upon. We'll start the training around best practices, making sure that we calibrate our understanding of the best practices and how we would carry those out. But then the unit assessment and the rubric creation and all of that will happen with the teaching team, that is from the instructional portion. It's a bit of work in progress.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, stay here.
Yes, she does. Yes, Chair Herndon, Chair Herndon, she does. Last month, Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott shared the mid-year data for our K eight students, and this month, Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, Deputy Superintendent, will share the Decatur High School mid-year data.
Good afternoon again. I will share the mid-year data for Decatur High School's STAR assessment. Very much like math, mid-year data, STAR gives us insight into where students are performing with the end of course expectation. Student outcomes are shared in four categories. Extinguish, which signifies that students are well prepared for the next grade level or course. Proficient, which indicates proficiency in the knowledge and skills necessary at the grade level. Developing, which demonstrates that students are partially proficient in the knowledge and skills necessary, and that they need additional academic support. And the last level is beginning, which demonstrates, which signifies that students are not yet demonstrating proficiency in the knowledge and skills necessary, and that they need substantial support for the next grade level or course, or to be on track for college and career readiness. This initial graph provides insights into the distribution of students across those performance levels I just mentioned. It also gives us the overall achievement of ninth, three twelve graders at or above the developing level. Our tenth graders, pardon my paper, and upside down and backwards. Our tenth graders stand out with over two hundred students performing at the highest level in math, and there are approximately a hundred and fifty students from ninth and eleventh grades also performing at the extinguished level. At the midpoint of the academic year, overall, eighty-one percent of Decatur High School students have reached the developing level or higher in math. Our goal is for our end-of-year data to reflect that eighty-one percent of our students are at proficient or extinguished levels indicating sustained progress and achievement. Reading, our reading performance surpasses that of math with eighty-five percent of students in grades nine through twelve demonstrating proficiency at the developing level or higher. Once again, our tenth graders exhibit exceptional performance with seventy-six percent of students projected to be proficient or higher at the mid-year mark. Now let's look at the data based on different racial groups. If students took the end-of-course assessment in December, here's the percentage of students from each group that would be performing at the developing level or higher. In math, we have fifty-seven percent for black students, eighty-nine percent for Asians, ninety percent for multiracial, eighty-five percent for Hispanic, and ninety percent 90% for multiracial, 85% for Hispanic, and 90% for white students. We'll also see the percentages of the percentages for reading performance as well. When examining economic status, the two racial groups with 15 or more students represented in economically disadvantaged are black and white. The remaining racial groups in Decatur High School had less than 15 students in the economically disadvantaged category. Of our white students, 985 are not designated for free and reduced lunch, while 37 of them are. For our black students, 164 are not designated for free and reduced lunch, and 226 of our black students are. When comparing performance, 78% of economically disadvantaged white students performed at developing or higher levels on the mid-year STAR assessment. Whereas, 55% of economically disadvantaged black students achieved the same. Furthermore, 77% of black students not designated as economically disadvantaged and 94% of white students not designated performed at developing or higher. So we can see that comparison. So what have we done with this data? In addition to identifying the right support for students either through partner-up, credit recovery, tutoring, and remedial support during wintertime, we have taken a closer look at our graduating senior class. It was important for us to triangulate this data to ensure we are using our resources to support students who really need it. Several factors can be at play that would cause students to score low on the STAR test. For 12th graders, it could be senioritis, absenteeism, or just not attending to the test well on that day. Or it could be that some students' learning profiles are such that this would align with where we would anticipate their course to be. So we looked at all of those factors. And of the 79 students performing at the beginning level in math, we are intensely intervening for 46 of these students to guard the I V math during wintertime, tier-three small groups remedial math classes, Saturday school, extended-day tutoring, attendance interventions, establishing a caring adult in the building, and implementing specified I E T services. Of the 52 students in our 12th grade class who tested at the beginning level in reading, we are actually intervening for eight of those students using the same intervention methods that I previously shared, but those methods also based on the literacy needs of the students. It is so important that as we shake these young people's hands in May and they take that walk across the stage, signifying a shift from high school to post-secondary life, that we have done all to ensure their preparedness. Team at Decatur High School is using these results and other academic and non-academic resources to do, to do just that and solidify learning for all students. This slide just talked about our STAR assessment that we will be implementing grades two through 12 in reading next year and also for grades one through 12 in math. Um, Jennifer Burton, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, has spoken about that before. So I just wanted to remind us that these results will be consistent for us moving forward from elementary down. Any questions?
Well, only eight of 52.
We did the vetting process to see who really needed support. And through that process, we have students who did not score or at the beginning level learner on STAR tests that are in I V courses, or they have high grades, or this was an outlier based upon their past assessment results. So we boiled it down to who we really needed to intervene for.
Okay.
So for reading, that's eight.
If we expand that to two to 12, um, so, you know, in this case, we're providing highly, highly engaged services for the eight reading and excellent math, right? As we expand to two to 12, then instead of it being 30 total students, we're, you know, like 200 total students, whatever the numbers are. How are we going to be able to maintain that level of, of resourcing attention?
I think you're going ahead to the next conversation.
All right. I'll ask my other question.
Then, I just wanted to piggyback on what Hans was asking more specifically to the data here. My math may be wrong, but I think we're looking at 104 DHS students not seniors at the beginning level in math. So are you taking that systematic approach with them to determine who may not have been testing well that day versus performance? And, okay.
We did it for nine through 12. I wanted to highlight our seniors because they're graduating in a few months and want to make sure that they have the support so that they're prepared for whatever happens after high school.
And just so that I understand, in the high school, of the 226 economically disadvantaged black students, almost half of them are at the beginning in terms of reading versus the whole STAR that is open. Um, yes, this is the slide that I was.
In your math?
So that, uh, that aligns with developing and reading and math. So this is both of them.
Yeah.
So about, I mean, roughly about half of our economically disadvantaged black students are in the beginning category.
Yeah, so.
And about half are economically disadvantaged. Well, a little more than half. 55% are already developing or better, so then that leaves 45%.
That are at the beginning. Yeah, so it's a, it's a giant chunk, right? Um, so this comports with all the other data that we've been looking at. This is kind of the core of what we're working on from Assembly on.
Exactly. Um, what I wanted to close this out, as far as this presentation is concerned, is that during my superintendent comments this, tonight, I'm going to really talk around about how we are going to strengthen our equity work. Um, we have a, I have a three-pronged approach, if you will, that is going to look at this equity work specifically with our most vulnerable students. And what do those supports look like? And, yes, they are also based into the budget, so.
I, I think if I'm looking at this correctly, the interesting thing to me is that if you're black but not economically disadvantaged, your percentage is almost the same as if you're white but economically disadvantaged. So this is not all a, a resource or financial, um, access issue that it cannot be. Uh, so I think maybe some of our focus needs to be with some other lenses, not just how much money these families have, how much they're putting into tutoring, although that could be some of it. Because if you are a white child that's economically disadvantaged, you look like you are performing at about the same level as a black child that has a lot, all the resources.
That is not filtered. So realizing you're looking at this slide, you are not controlling for economically disadvantaged. So that means that filter is not there, so they're embedded within. Uh, it's funny, I had this conversation with our PTO advisory group this morning, and they had that aha moment as well. I said, because the strategies that you put in place look a little different dependent upon what you're controlling for or what's at the root cause. So that first bar is inclusive of economically disadvantaged. It's just looking at all blacks. But then if you say, give me black and economically disadvantaged, and then give me all-white economically disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged, not like it's a word, but then give me only whites that are economically disadvantaged. It's about the, what are you controlling for when you are running that data? That's why the interoperable data system is so valuable, so you can really see who's performing where. And then it helps us to target the support.
So, so just so that I'm, I'm, I'm clear, that, that confused me a little bit. The horizontal red bar for black students that are achieving at 77%, that is not the 164 that's right under that.
That's all black.
So that's all 390 black students in the school.
So this represents, the red bar represents all-black students who do not have the designation of free or reduced lunch. The 226 represents the number of black students who do have the designation of free or reduced lunch. If you add those two numbers together, then you have all the number.
So then you have, then, then the 77% is the black students who are not economically disadvantaged, is what I'm trying to get. Yeah. So that comports with when we were doing the Tableau the first time when I sat down. We, we actually kind of looked at this, and Carmen, I think your assessment is exactly correct, that we saw economically disadvantaged white students perform at or better than what I guess I'd call advantaged black students.
Yeah, black children with disabilities. So that has maybe some of the challenges to look at this from other lenses, other than just economic or financial resources.
There's a racial element here, obviously.
Obviously.
It's a both of them, yeah.
Originally, when we shared this data, we did not have it filtered to that level. Thanks to Estim and C, they were able to filter it so that we could use that.
Yes. Yep. The other question I have is, um, where, where do parents find the actual STAR report? I think, um, if we're going to be transitioning from math to STAR, where they can actually look and, um, and see, if you can see it in the, I can pull up my own kids' NICAT, but just as a experiment. I can see what the score was, but I don't know what is considered proficient, developing, et cetera, and exactly what the breakdown was. Do you have to, I remember, you have to request the report so that you can see, because that could be cumbersome if parents are actually wanting to know where they fall, or is that in NICAT somewhere?
They not have to request this. It should depend to parents. Um, it is not currently a consistent practice that it is. So that's something that we do need to make sure that as we move into next year, we're doing this bulk support. Elementary school, we pretty much send those home like regularly. As kids get older, that practice kind of wanes. But we want to make sure that all schools are sending the report so that you can have the full interpretation to be able to read and understand what the report is.
I think that would be helpful, but if, if, that way you get into the habit of seeing it as a little, maybe a thing of it.
Yep. All right, now I do have another question, and I'm sorry. You, you started with the STAR performance, and hey, if we look at seniors versus our sophomores over here, you know, is it a case of senioritis? So does the graph above with the red and the yellow and the green and the blue include all performance? And then the next page went on to distinguish between the students who could not perform as developing versus the students who just had a case of senioritis, this one example, and didn't answer the question? Because I, I guess what I'm thinking of is the same thing I've mentioned with math that I've seen in my own classroom. How do we bridge that gap in this change culture so that students are taking this test seriously? Because otherwise, we're using this data to draw conclusions that may or may not be valid.
But didn't grasp out, um, how we did our data dig to really see and kind of just share that in words. So what you see here is what we did, the vetting of who really needed that, and we went to the process to do what you just said, to make sure that that's the representation of where we missed. And then we named the intervention.
Ultimately, we would be able to link this to some adjectives, formatives, and all the other elements.
You triangulated.
The closed back loop that you're describing, yeah.
Yes, you will be able to triangulate the data easily, not with text.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott, for the update.
I do, I do want to mention that this, I think it's the first time that we've seen a presentation of this data with, I mean, this is difficult news to be delivered, but there were concrete steps that we were taking in with the data and with what we were going to be doing with the students to help. So I very much appreciate that additional piece of information, that that's what's going to fix it rather than just continue to.
We have, we have one final presentation.
Yes, and I would like to call on Mrs. Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, to provide an update on our dyslexia screener.
Good evening, Board Chair Herden, Vice Chair Dr. Fulton, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gina Riddick. In 2019, CSD was selected to be part of the Georgia DOE Dyslexia Pilot. During this time, the Dyslexia Task Force was formed where staff, families, and communities worked collaboratively to create several processes, including the Dyslexia Screening Process. This school year, we use math as our universal screener for all students K through eight. And then our K through three students take a dyslexia screener. The dyslexia screener flags students that have a potential risk for dyslexia. We use Acadian, K and one, and Math Fluency for grades two and three. For our general education students who score below the 30th percentile on math or were flagged by Math Fluency or Acadian, screening consent was issued for the KPEA 3 and hearing and vision screening. This is a change from last year. Last year, students needed both a dyslexia flag and a score below the 30th percentile on math. In an attempt to cast a wider net, students only needed one indicator to move to the KPEA 3. Families of students who showed signs of risk on the KPEA 3 were notified, and MTFS, we met with families to discuss the results in more detail. This is our data from this year. A light blue bar shows the number of students who had at least one risk for from a screener. The dark blue bar shows the number of students that received consent for screening. Not all students received consent for screening because they may have been given the KPEA 3 earlier in the year. They may already have a diagnosis, or they may be multilingual and still acquiring the English language. The orange bar is the number of students whose families agreed to screening. You see the largest discrepancy at Claremont in the number of consent issues and students being screened. We have 21 families not returned a screening consent form. We are still working closely with the school in preparation for the student conferences to ensure that families understand the process so they can make an informed decision. In the final bar, which is the smallest, you see the number of students who were found to be at risk for characteristics of dyslexia. Reading is still taking place. We're still in the screening window. So it's possible that the at-risk number could increase. Out of right now, 30 students were found to be at risk for characteristics of dyslexia. While this is good news that our number is so small, we still have a large number of students that were flagged in some way for needing additional support in reading. As we move into the next year, we wanted to create a more streamlined process of finding any students with reading difficulties, including those with characteristics of dyslexia. This flowchart conveys the multiple gating process we'll use, beginning with one universal screener next year, which will be STAR. After this universal screener, we will administer a secondary STAR assessment to all K-3 students called STAR C B M. C B M is curriculum-based measurement. We will also administer C B Ms to students in grades four through seven that score below the 30th percentile on STAR. Some C B Ms are done on the computer, some are done one-on-one with a teacher, and take between one to five minutes, depending on the test. between one to five minutes, depending on the test. The CBMs are different depending on the grade level and, and dependent on the time of year. So a kindergartner in the fall would take a rapid automatic naming assessment, encoding, letter naming, but then in the winter would take letter sounds and phoneme segmentation. Sixth or seventh grader that scored below the thirtieth percentile would take a oral reading fluency assessment. CBMs are skills-based and therefore identifies the specific area of need for students. By streamlining the process with STAR, we're creating simplicity for school industries to the integrity of an assessment process and need identification and determination. So if you look at the problem-solving model here, the first question is, is there a problem? We look at the student data, the universal screening data. Data tells us there's a problem. The student scored below the thirtieth percentile. That's our first indicator. Then we're going to use the CBM to tell us why the problem is occurring. So let's say a student scored below in phoneme segmentation. The teacher will address the problem by using Eltern Word Boxes. We'll monitor this progress through STAR. So as a pilot district, we've addressed Senate Bill forty-eight with a strong identification process for dyslexia, for which the Dyslexia Task Force is to be commended. I am faithful for the solid foundation that was set for me. Now, we're expanding our use of assessments to inform prescriptive next steps for our teachers, which will help bring our students up to proficient literacy levels in the shortest amount of time. What questions?
Is it, is it the plan, one of the uses of something like a community and schools would be to help get the word out in connection to those twenty-one families that never got us the consent back?
They can, they can support all sorts of things that are on your caseload. So that would be academic type of support.
Yeah, that, that feels like, it's a little heartbreaking, right? So obviously, some outreach is required there.
Yes.
At some schools, we still have a pretty, if some, not all, a decent discrepancy between all and then consent issues, which is consent issues, which is a good marker of a screening test. You want to perhaps to widen that, you want some false positives. Do you have some insight into what that is, what that data is meaningful for you? Are those kids that already have a diagnosis? Are those kids that you find maybe the benchmark is reasonably low, so you catch them, and then once they get through the screening, you actually find that they don't need any further services? I think that it's fine if it's that way, but what that means?
Yeah, so we have each student, and we have a list. So if they were tested within the last year, if they are ESOL, if, you know, they may not have acquired the language, and so they're actually going to score below the thirtieth percentile, so we're not going to screen them yet for, we're not going to keep screening them when they're still acquiring the language. Or if they have an IEP, then we would take that information to the IETP, and then they would, you know, make some determination. So that, that is the discrepancy. But we keep a, we have a list of why we're not going to consent.
And any follow-up for them in a year's time?
So, so anyone under our new model, anyone that's in that light blue bar, they're going, if you're in K through three, all students are going to get the CBM. So we're going to know, even if you're not getting to dyslexia, we're going to see that you're struggling in this area. Because there is a need. The other add, which this isn't dyslexia screening, but it is an attempt to support our students that are past this dyslexia screening, so fourth and above, is, if you're scoring below the thirtieth percentile, that's a red flag for us, and we want to do some more digging. And then we want to make a really prescriptive plan based on that data.
So I'm just a little struck by that. I'm just looking in a little more detail on the slide. If you look at the number of students that are screened versus identified as at risk, it's pretty consistently across the schools between twenty-five percent and about forty or forty-five percent of the screened students that are identified at risk, with the glaring exception of Glenwood and Tally Street. Do we have any sense why those are so low? They're just very different from every other school. I'm curious if we have any, like, do you have any insight into why that might be the difference?
Um, as to why they're in the all category?
No, no, no. Glenwood is one.
Only one out of sixteen at Glenwood.
Zero out of nine at Tally.
Zero out of nine at Tally. Everywhere else it's forty percent, give or take.
Um, I don't know, but we could look individually at, you know, each of those students have been screened. They received the KPEA. And then based on those results, it is, you know, you are determined to have at-risk or not-at-risk characteristics.
I would, I would just want at that take that, like, did we accidentally identify too many people to be screened, or did we miss people that might have been at risk if it's that much of an outlier from the other schools? And I get, like, we're dealing with a fairly low end here, so it just might vary year to year, and that's going to be the nature of it, but that, that's a flag that would jump up that I want to miss.
It sounds like what she's saying is that, you know, it's a good screening test, like, you want to, you want to catch everybody, and then, you know, some people are not going to get past the KPEA, or, you know, they're going to have people meet that.
Yeah, I mean, we want to meet their needs, whether that is, you know, whatever it is, and I think our new plan does that. The thing about Tally Street is, so we are still in the screening process, and so we still have students at Tally Street. The, we kept them in the nine to be screened, but, meaning they all lost. Right, so they're still, we're still in mid-process.
So that even more Glenwood looks like an outlier. So that's just what I would want to pay attention to.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up about the consent issue versus screens? So Claremont and twenty-one, it looks like maybe at Glenwood there was a discrepancy of one or two. Will those students be able to be screened this year?
So if, so in some of these situations, parents declined. So, yeah, so we wouldn't screen them if, if parents declined. But they would still receive, so they still took the CBM. And so we still have data that we can go in and support. The parent just said, I'm, I don't want them to take the KPEA-3. And that's okay.
And then I think I misunderstood, I'm sorry. In, in all cases, the parents declined, or were there some in which the parents declined, and others for which we just didn't get the, so I'm asking about the ones that didn't decline but just are still out there.
Yes, and we're still, the window is still open. So we're still working with them. We're working with Sensible Lockwood and imposing those gaps on that twenty-one.
Thank you.
So Chair Hunden, during our initial conversation, philosophy regarding the teaching of reading, the achievement gap, and intervention. So this afternoon specifically, all of these presentations have highlighted how we're creating that instructional infrastructure in those three key areas. So I think we're going to move on to policy.
Yeah, let's try to quickly knock out some policy, Ms. Lynch.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Hunden, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, esteemed members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Gina Riddick. Today, we have two policies on the agenda for work session. These policies were discussed in pre-work last month. The recommendation that will be made is that the City Schools of the Caterer Board of Education accept each of these policies for first read. They will then be available for public comment through assembly. First, we have policy GBKA, professional personnel layoffs. This policy was presented in pre-work last month, conducted in the beginning of the year. It addresses professional personnel layoffs or a reduction in force. There was no feedback provided at the last meeting, and no changes have been made to the version of the policy presented at the last meeting. I would like to emphasize that when this policy was initially introduced last month, it was important, and we all stress that we do not anticipate any reductions in force as of this month.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion for this policy, or may I read the recommendation?
You may read the recommendation.
The recommendation being made is that the City Schools of the Caterer Board of Education accept policy GBKA, professional personnel layoffs for first read.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy GBKA for first read? Board Member Utz makes the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Johnson-Davis, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimously. The next one, please.
Second, we have policy GARS, employee transfer. This policy acknowledges that an imbalance of staff may occur for reasons including, but not limited to, loss or gain in student enrollment and budget allotments, restructure or reorganization, and opening or closing of schools. It goes on to allow for our transfer process within the district to assign or reassign staff to existing known vacancies to balance district staff numbers. There was no feedback provided on this policy, and no changes are reflected from the version presented in the pre-work last month. Is there any discussion, or may I read the recommendation?
Please read it.
The recommendation being made is that the City Schools of the Caterer Board of Education accept policy GARS, employee transfer for first read.
Excellent, do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy GARS for first read?
Double.
Thank you. Board Member Johnson-Davis makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oops, second's the motion, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you for continuing to provide us with policies to consider and update. That concludes our work session for today. We'll be back right at, well, it says be back at five. It is five. Take one minute, stretch your legs, and then we'll begin the regular board meeting. Thank you. That's when it's cold. All right, let's see. It's just okay, I'm going to send some feedback.
Yeah, some feedback.
Yeah, I got some feedback.
My feedback?
This is right here, second year students.
Be out of read tonight.
What's that? Jesus, they're here.
Yes.
Hold on a minute, a second.
I'm asking, I'm actually, I have a question. Um, for how your presentation is viewed as a format, all you need to do is press the button on the right side, click the button to go back. If you have some really tough questions, you can just go to the. Good, thank you.
She told me my BFF was out. Oh, that's sick. Oh, no. You wrote about that? I gave you something to read tonight.
I've read this already.
Oh, I should have known. Yeah, yeah.
I'm actually wearing the full letter with it next time, but I'll be.
So, Joe, so, Joe. Yeah, crazy.
All right. We will now call this meeting to order at 5:04 PM. We ask that you silence all of your cell phones and pagers at this time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Now I ask that all that are able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which stands on relation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. At this time, I'm going to seek control of the meeting to Dr. Whitaker to accept nominations for Board Chair for 2024.
Yes, thank you. Are there any motions from the board for Board Chair?
I will nominate James Hunden for Board Chair.
All right, uh, thank you so much. Is there a second? Second, all right. Board members, please complete your ballots. One, one name, the one.
Very secret ballot.
Here we are. This is for Chair. I am pleased to announce that James Hunden has been elected Chair of Texas retroactively to January ninth, 2024 at 5:00 PM, and through the upcoming year with a vote of five to zero. We will now see the meaning to Chair Hunden to accept nominations for Vice Chair.
Excellent, are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Dr. Carmen Sultan.
Excellent, do I have a second? There we go. Hearing no other nominations, board members, please complete your ballots for Vice Chair. I am pleased to announce that Dr. Carmen Sultan has been elected Board Vice Chair effective retroactively to January ninth, 2024 at 5:00 PM, and through the upcoming year with a vote of five to zero. Board, we need to ratify all actions taken by the board in its. Board, we need to ratify all actions taken by the Board and its Chair at that January 9th board meeting and any actions of the Board and its Chair taken since then. Do I have a motion to ratify all actions taken by the Board and its Chair at the January 9th, 2024 board meeting and any actions of the Board and its Chair taken since then? Do I have a second? Anderson, second's the motion, any discussion? We left this off the agenda last time, I take full responsibility for this, so appreciate the votes to retroactively elect people. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Now we move on to approval of the board meeting agenda for February, board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I want to approve the agenda.
Sultan, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Anderson, any discussion of the agenda this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is the approval of minutes from the previous board meeting, do I have a motion to approve January's regular board minutes?
Do you approve January's regular board minutes?
Thank you, board member Utz makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Davis, second's the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we are now going to move forward with our other agenda items, starting with student and staff recognition. Dr. Whitaker, I see quite a few familiar to me faces in the audiences, are we recognizing any of them?
Yes, at this time, our Deputy Superintendent Karen Newton-Scott will come to the podium for some special recognition.
Thank you Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Sultan, esteemed members of the board and Dr. Whitaker. Today I have the pleasure of making three presentations. First, we will recognize National School Counseling Week. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated the first of all week in February. The week highlights the significant impact that school counselors have in aiding students during their schooling years. To recognize them and their efforts, the American School Counselor Association has been holding and sponsoring the National School Counseling Week since 2011. This year's 2024 theme, School Counseling Standards-Based to be Focused, aims to increase public attention to the unique contribution of school counselors within the United States school system and highlights school counselors' tremendous impact in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week was celebrated February 5th through the 9th, and during that week, school administration teams across the school district showered school counselors with words of praise and gestures of gratitude for their never-ending support, tireless dedication, and overall contribution to student success. The CSD school counseling staff are definitely all in Decatur. Did you know that there are only approximately 1,300 schools nationwide who hold a recognized ASCA Model Program designation? And CSD schools represent five of that 1,300. The RAMP designation awarded for aligning, the RAMP designation is awarded for aligning with the criteria in the ASCA National Model, recognizing schools' commitment to delivering a comprehensive, data-informed school counseling program and an exemplary educational environment. Our five schools who are RAMP designated are Greenwood, Oakhurst, Westchester, Tally Street, apologize for that, Beacon Hill Middle School. To further celebrate our school counselors, Dr. Whitaker will present a proclamation from the National School Counseling Week to the Assistant Superintendent of Student School Support Services and the 20 members of the CSD School Counseling Department. I'd like to invite the school counselors and Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Mrs. Francis Hope, to please come to the front.
Just standing here, I'm gonna talk to y'all for a moment. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered to be an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, I, Dr. Jima Whitaker, Superintendent of the City Schools of Decatur, do by, hereby proclaim February 6th through the 9th, 2024 as National School Counseling Week. Congratulations. Everybody just move slightly to the side, right there, to give our school counselors another round of applause.
We'll have a certificate of recognition that Dr. Jones will give to each school counselor as we bring up our next recognition for this evening, which is the Beacon Hill Middle School Performance Arts Program. Beacon Hill's Performing Arts Program caters to over 200 students in grade six through eight and continues to flourish. This year, the band proudly boasts five honor ensembles collaborating with professional musicians from the Atlanta area. Forty-seven seventh and eighth graders auditioned for the district honor band and first round Georgia All-State Band, leading to 25 students earning spots in the district honor band this February, with 17 recommended to audition for the Georgia All-State Band. Beacon Hill continues to shine as a state-level model for music performance. Ensembles from both the band and the chorus have been selected four times to perform as exemplary music groups at the State In-Service Conference for the Georgia Music Educators Association. In just three years of in-person learning, the Beacon Hill Middle School Orchestra has grown to 120 students, and the original 50 are now enrolled in the high school orchestra program. Students from Beacon Hill Band and Orchestra consistently secure first-chair positions in their respective district honor band and orchestra. An impressive total of 57 Beacon Hill Band, Orchestra, and Chorus students passed their first auditions in the highly competitive statewide All-State Audition, with 17 from band, 22 from chorus, and 18 from orchestra, marking among the highest numbers in states. The passion, creativity, engagement, and commitment of our music students are evident in their learning and performances. Recognizing this excellence, the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has named City Schools of Decatur one of the nation's best communities for music education. That deserves a round of applause. A big congratulations to all of our excellent music students at Beacon Hill, in which we could not bring them all here tonight, but we do, we do have their directors, and at this time, I would like to invite our music directors to the front for recognition. We are recognizing Mrs. Christine Kramer, district honor band. Dr. David Hershorn, district All-State Chorus. And Dr. McCrady, our orchestra director. Thank you so much for what you do for our students every day. I last for certainly to leave our lease, our Tally Street Tigers. Tally Street would like to recognize 12 student leaders who have been representing us all year. First, we have Connie Bussine and Lillian Gutman from the House of Medea. We have Chloe Selyers and Chloe Bell from the House of Amustad. Yes, I didn't work, all right. Next, we have Zen Osten-Masick and Eleanor Fablis from the House of Applebee's. Sariah Hila and Taylor Hall from the House of It's a Bendy. Madeline, Madeline, and, Madeline, uh, Madeline Edney and Anna Schuman from the House of Uma Ramon Bupshi. And Malatia Sofer from the House of Unraca. These students were registered at the end of their fourth grade year, they gave speeches to their other house members, participated in Tally's Amazing Shape, where they interacted with members of the community and engaged in a round of interviews. As a house leader, these students planned house meetings, Hawaii events, Tally rallies, acted as ambassadors, and represented Tally at the Ron Clark Academy Leadership Conference for student leaders. Most recently, these students helped to plan and implement a visit from the Ron Clark Academy, a tour, and a Tally rally script. These students helped to create activities to bring all grade levels together and create bonds that will last beyond elementary school. The house system would not be successful without the leadership, without the leadership of these students and their adult heads of house. Please stand when I call your name, Alicia Reno. Alicia Harvey. Miss Troy Brown. And Lillian. I'm so proud of the effort that these students have put forth, and we look forward to seeing their leadership skills in action when they enter Beacon Hill, Decatur High School, and beyond. Now, I invite our board members and Superintendent Whitaker to join us down front for photo opportunities with all of them, beginning with our Tally students. with all of them, beginning with our Tally students.
... possible education experience for all our students. A copy of the audit report will be provided for public view on the district's financial website. If there are no questions, Mr. Christopher McKeller, Partner, and Malvin Jenkins will now provide additional details on the district's fiscal year 2023 financial audit.
All right, well, she just took most of my presentation, so hopefully this uh won't be a lot of repeat. So my name is Christopher McKeller, a partner with Malvin Jenkins. I was the lead partner on the city schools audit. You should have before you two different documents, the audit presentation and then the annual financial report. I'll stick pretty close to the audit presentation. It contains just a few financial highlights, our required communications, and the results of the audit. So flip over to page two. This gives just a little bit of information about Malvin Jenkins and our governmental practice. As you can see there, we audit over 650 governments throughout the southeast. We've got over 135,000 hours to our governmental plan. Then on page three, as you can see there, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility as external auditors is to issue an opinion based on our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards. What I'm sure you all would like to know is how did the city schools do? We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which means the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. On page four, this is just a snapshot of a few high-level statement of net position, or often you think of it as the balance sheet. So your statement of net position includes your capital assets and long-term debt, which your fund financial statement defines. So total assets and deferred outflows were approximately 299.7 million, offset by liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of approximately 244.6 million, leaving a net position of approximately 55.1 million. To further break that down, there was approximately 9.6 million of net position that was legally restricted by outside entities, and 134.7 million was net investment capital assets. And this basically means your capital asset lessed any related debt. That leaves you with a deficit unrestricted net position of approximately 89.2 million. But one thing to keep in mind when looking at that deficit unrestricted net position is net position also includes your net pension liability and net OPEB liability, which was required by Gatsby Statement Number 6875 about 10 years ago. The total of the debt pension liability and associated deferred inflows and outflows was approximately 55.7 million, and the net OPEB liability was approximately 54.4 million. So if you take those out of it, you end up with approximately 17 million of unrestricted net position. The net pension liability and net OPEB liability is the city schools' portion of the total state plan, and the liabilities are actuarially determined. So the school district has no influence over that. And this is not a liability that will come due in two to three years. This is funded through contributions that the city schools make. So I'd like to point that out, so when people hear deficit net position, it's not that you have these bonds that are coming due that call. On page five, we did issue two compliance reports. So one was required by government auditing standards, and the other is the single audit compliance report, which deals with federal compliance. And both of these report on our test of the city's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. Then on page eight, we did have student management recommendations. We often refer to as management points. One was outstanding checks. There were approximately 40 outstanding checks in the amount of $8,699, clearly immaterial, but the state requires those after they are five years old to be issued to the journal entries. There was one journal entry that the supporting documentation was misplaced. We had a sample of 50 journal entries, and one of them was missing the documentation, not something that we felt was fraudulent in any manner in this place. And then we did have one material weakness. I do like to point out that material weakness doesn't mean that we found any fraudulent activity. Our standards require us, if we find a journal entry, we have to assess it for deficiency in internal control. Depending on the dollar amount and what fund it's in, it could be a material weakness. This one just happened to be in the federal programs fund, which is a smaller fund, and the $74,837 happened to be material for that fund, so we were required to report that as a material weakness. But out of the multitude of entries that they made throughout the year, as you heard, we tested 46.2 billion. Sometimes entries slip through the cracks, so not anything to be concerned about. On page seven, this starts with our required communications. I won't read through all of these, but I will point out a couple. About the middle of the page there, during the current year, the city schools did implement Gatsby Statement Number 96, dealing with inscription-based information technology arrangements. This didn't change the financial statement. There were no material savings, is what we often refer to on that. But that was implemented during fiscal year. We received full cooperation with the city schools' management and staff. Lenita and the rest of the finance department, they do a great job having things ready for us when we show up. They are an open book. If we have questions, they're quick to provide those to us. And they should be commended on their efforts in putting together the annual financial report every year and getting ready for the audit. Oftentimes, people don't see the behind-the-scenes of the effort that goes into preparing for the audit. We ask for a lot, so they should be commended on their efforts with that. On page nine, there were no uncorrected or past adjustments, so all adjustments have been posted and are included in the annual financial report, and we are independent of the city schools, which is required by the and it's what you would want from your external audit. And if we'll flip over to there are two upcoming Gatsby pronouncements that I wanted to quickly mention. Gatsby Statement Number 100 with accounting changes and error correction. This won't change things significantly. Probably be some extra disclosures if a major fund moves to a non-major fund or something like that, but nothing big there. Gatsby Statement Number 101 with compensated absentee will probably change the calculation of compensated absentee. So in my experience, it's often a little bit larger because it includes things like sick leave that will be taken and will pay out, any matching portions of pensions that are paid out when someone leaves, that has to be included. So it could increase that sum, and it'll change the And that is all I have for you this evening, unless there are any specific questions on the presentation for the annual financial report.
A quick question on whether OPEB is impacted by recent state adjustments to the health insurance benefits and specifically the payment?
So I know they changed the contribution amount. It's steadily been increasing. We did see this year that the OPEB liability did decrease some, whereas the teachers' retirement liability increased dramatically, mainly due to some of the pension investments that the state has.
So OPEB may be, our OPEB liability might be declining because the state is requiring us to contribute substantially, kind of substantially more to the benefits benefit?
I would assume so, but you know, that's always dependent on the actuarial calculation of the liability and how much of the contributions goes to payouts for that year versus paying to
When they're compensated absentee, are you saying that this is going to be a new impact?
Yes, correct, and that will be for, I should have mentioned that, that will be for fiscal year 25. Unless you all thought that early, you Oh, I don't get any papers on that. Hey, wait till it's required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Malvin Jenkins, once again for thorough presentation and job. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next presentation.
Yes, Chair Handen and Dr. Broom. Our chief financial officer will remain to present the second amendment to the FY24 general fund budget due to additional revenue and expenses.
Good evening again. Since the December 2023 midtown amendment, the district has received unbudgeted revenue and incurred unbudgeted expenditures that have had a financial impact on the general fund budget and requires more approval to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund balance. The first request follows under the Strategic Accelerator for Cultivating and Retaining Quality Professionals. In December 2023, the governor amended the state's fiscal year 24 budget and allocated $1,000 one-time salary supplement to support retention of educators and support staff. Each district's total supplement amount was based on the number of certified and support positions earned in the Quality-Based Education Formula, also referred to as QDE, and certified non-QDE-funded positions. The state allocated the district $546,423 in one-time salary supplemental funds for 491.36 positions. To ensure that all city schools of Decatur four-time and part-time positions receive the bonus, the district funded an additional $412,162 for 437.64 additional positions. The total number of employees that received a one-time salary supplement was 929. Four-time employees received $1,000, and part-time employees received $500. The total fiscal impact of the bonus was $958,585. Of this amount, $546,423 was funded by the state, and $412,162 was funded by the district, which resulted in a one-time increase for fiscal year 24 of $412,162. This amount is not returned. The second and third request follows under the Strategic Accelerator for Organizational Adaptiveness and Excellence and is for insurance purposes. On December 24, 2022, the sprinkler head burst at Winona Park Elementary School, and as a result, classroom furniture and supplies were significantly damaged and required replacement. An insurance claim was submitted for the damage content, and the district received a final insurance payment of $76,399. Winona Park has $3,756 in outstanding replacement items that need to be purchased. The remainder of the balance will increase the fund balance. The total fiscal year 2024 fiscal impact of the insurance claim was $76,399 in revenue and $3,756 in expense. The remaining revenue of $72,633 will increase the general fund balance. The fourth and fifth requests are grant allocation. The district was awarded $81,625 in career technical and adult education grants. The district also received $546,423 from the state as referenced previously in one-time salary supplement for the retention. Both grants are budget-neutral in that budget revenue, in that both revenue and expenditures will increase by the same amount. The final budget amendment request for fiscal year 2024 is to adjust QDE revenue to reflect the allotted amount as listed on the revised December 2023 to reflect the allotted amount as listed on the revised December twenty-twenty-three QBE allotment sheet. Any questions on the request? The first column on the left is a list of the major revenue sources and expenditure categories by function. The second column titled Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Budget is the current fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. The third column titled Amendment Two shows the fiscal impact of all budget requests as previously discussed. The third column titled Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Four Revised Budget is the revised fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget after Amendment Two. In the top section of the chart on the left, but on my right, highlighted in blue is the fiscal year twenty-four total revenue of ninety-nine point two million dollars. After adding the additional eight hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars in revenue from Amendment Two, the revised fiscal year twenty-four general fund revenue budget is approximately one hundred million. Highlighted in blue at the bottom of the chart is the fiscal year twenty-four total expenditures of approximately ninety-eight point nine million dollars. After adding the additional, after adding the additional approximately one million dollars from Amendment Two, the revised budget is approximately one hundred million. The small box to the right titled Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Beginning Fund Balance shows the actual beginning fund balance for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, fourteen point nine million dollars. This is the audited amount and is not likely to change. Initially, prior to Amendment Two, revenue exceeded expenditures by two hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, and that amount was projected to be added back to the fund balance of fourteen point nine million dollars, increasing the projected end of fund balance to fifteen point one million dollars. After Amendment Two, revenue exceeds expenditures by twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars, which will increase the fourteen point nine million dollars fund balance to fourteen point nine two million. The projected fund balance percentage of revenue is fourteen point nine two percent, which is within the board policy guidelines of a fund balance between four and fifteen percent. I would be happy to respond to any questions for that clarification.
As we correct our, correct the wrong word, as we align our flat schedules to ensure we're maximizing QBE, the difference between what the state gives us versus what we have to then additionally commit as a part of bonuses to cover everyone, that variance should go down, correct? It should actually have a higher percentage of people covering other QBE.
Correct, but that will be not...
Yes, not missing, right? Yeah, all right, good.
Yeah, I think that's what I wanted to ask about. So the governor approved this QBE-funded position, the thousand dollars. Do we know why, was there a rationale as to why he was funding only QBE earnings? Because I'm just wondering then, for us, because I'll be completely honest, I loved hearing the auditor talk about behind the scenes. As a classroom teacher, I see what happens to the school building. I just read the New York Times article yesterday about teacher burnout, absence, et cetera. So I think moving forward, if we're going to be using local funds for this stuff, we should be able to, again, explain why, other than the blanket of retention, recruitment and retention. I don't know if I articulated that well enough. I understand the governor may say one thing and then have another motive, but if we are getting a pot of money from this, I'd like to know a little bit more about that.
So when the governor provides the school system with QBE, it's based upon a formula for which we earn students better served. Now, why the governor would list certain positions and not all, that is not under the purview of the school system, but that's under the purview of the government. What I will say is that we, the city schools of Decatur, did say all means all. So if I'm a teacher and I'm funded under QBE, I don't know that teacher next to me is QBE. And so I would not want to say, well, teacher A, you will get the governor's bonus, but because you're funded locally, you're not going to. That is why we needed to do the amendment, and that's because we wanted to make sure all of our teachers were included, and that is regardless of what the governor stated.
So will we ever get a readout, not by name, of course, of QBE-funded positions versus locally-funded positions versus federally-funded positions?
No, it's just a bucket.
Okay, so coin to do, yeah, just a coin.
It's not like, it's not like the math teacher is a QBE teacher.
And it's happened in, it's happened in the past where we've gotten these state offices that have these delineations for this group gets it or this group doesn't, and we pass an amendment because if one group gets a bonus, we ensure that everybody else does. So then we have to pull into the following to tell them how much so that we can make sure it's equitable. So again, we can't control what the governor does, but we can make sure...
It's a big part of why, over this next year, we're going to be adapting the schedule to ensure that we get the full amount of QBE credit that we want to be able to get so that that discrepancy narrows.
Thank you, Mr....
Wait, wait.
Oh, boy. You tried.
You have a motion. We need to actually approve this amendment.
I think, I think just relative to the audit report, it is, I think, our expectation that the comptroller position that we're talking about as a part of this budget should help us with that specific aspect of the material. So I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, and the comptroller is set to start on March fourth. Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to amend FY24 budget?
Move.
Or member who makes the motion, maybe do I have a second?
Second.
Member Sultan, second motion. Any discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Doc, for your time representing the school district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just, I want to understand how you are able to earn a doctorate while working in probably one of the hardest jobs in the district.
Because she can.
So...
Thank you.
Right, I hear we have a guest.
Yes, yes. Chair Hunden, it is a distinct pleasure that I once again call on Dr. Lomita Broom, the CFO, who will be accompanied by Mr. Urban Johnson, our DeKalb County Tax Commissioner.
Hello.
Excuse me, my guest.
I don't know that you need an introduction, sir.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I come to this task during Dr. Whitaker's tour last year where she was getting familiar with DeKalb County. And she and Dr. Broom stopped by the tax commissioner's office to discover what things we were up to over there as it relates to the city of Decatur, the school system. And I think much to her surprise, she found out that the tax commissioner's office has very little to do with the city of Decatur. All with the school system, by nature of the legislative, the Decatur has decided to have their own tax operation, and of course, the school system is interested in it. But nonetheless, the governing authority, the school system and the city of Decatur have their own scheme, if you will, use that word sometimes lightly, that the tax commissioner and the tax office is always taking something from somebody. Tax commissioners oftentimes receive with the same enthusiasm as the root connect. But that's not the case here tonight. So briefly, I wanted to tell you and show you a little bit about, I talked about the city of Decatur, distinct from DeKalb County for election. There are thirteen cities in DeKalb, which I do collect taxes for. Decatur not being one of them. And of course, that decision was made years ago before my time in office. And in the tax commissioner's office the last twenty-four years, I had been the tax commissioner the last eight. My first job in the tax commissioner's office was in IT tech mission. So five promotions later, I am seventy-four years old today, highly blessed to be able to say that I'm the tax commissioner of the fourth largest county in Georgia. My home is Augusta. So little did I know when I was growing up in Augusta that I would be standing in the well of the city of Decatur schools some years later, thought I was going to be a train division leader. Is that any encouragement to anybody, go to school, keep your nose clean, keep working, and some good things may happen to you? I had no idea that I would be a tax commissioner. A little bit about our connection in the county. There was a question earlier about the tax digest. Tax digest is the primary vehicle by which all of the cities and school systems determine what money you will have to operate. Without the tax digest, you'll have to get a cut, I guess, if you're not on the corner without the tax digest. Tax digest is the vehicle by which all of the assets of the county are name-labeled, residential property, industrial property, the commercial property, and the tax assessor who does not work for the tax commissioner. The idea being that we don't want the fox watching the hen house. So the department that creates and does all of the statistical, the statistical work in terms of the... separate from the tax commissioner's office. Most people think that the assessor and the tax commissioner are one industry and that is not true, and that's by industry, definitely. Oftentimes, we will get the same kinds of questions about why a tax bill is what it is. Those kinds of questions, we try to answer, but we have some understanding of how the process should be working. Comes to answering questions specifically about why a piece of property has a certain dollar value, are the questions that we will refer to the assessor office. They have done supposedly statistical work, the analysis, and they have the comparable information to tell you why one property is at one price and another property is at another price. Certainly, there was a comment about the digest and the expectation that the digest will increase. As most of you probably know, property values have been going up over the last several years, and I'm sure that you hear the complaint. And in fact, if you're homeowners, and I'm sure most of you are, that you may have some of the same concerns yourself about your tax bill. All of us have that concern, and I put you at ease by telling you that the tax commissioner does not get a discount, so he has to pay his full monte everywhere. But we expect that the tax digest will continue to go up, and you might be familiar with the legislation under the dome currently that will limit increasing assessment values to about three percent. So I think that's headed to the House over the next few days. So we will, like you, will wait and find out how that shakes out through the legislative process. Looking at that, generally speaking, the best thing for some and not so much for others, depending on their economics and several things, I'm just seeing how that all shakes out, how we all figure out the adjustments we need to make. Remember what happened in California years ago, where they put a cap on the tax, like I said. What the outcome of that was. They had to spend a lot of time and work to undo that cap in California. That was a huge problem to them. All under the, careful what you ask for. I'm going to be my kid. So those are remarks that I thought that I would mention to you, not to take up a lot of your time, and then to offer an opportunity for you to ask any questions if you have to.
I have a question. So you anticipate an increase, but with a three percent cap, that increase may not be as great as it may have been last year when there wasn't a three percent cap?
My best guess is that the OPEB is about the best indicator of the future. It's the recent past, and we know that property values have been going up. We also know that DeKalb County has a lot of land. We know that investors are buying a lot of homes, even though selling those, just using those homes for rentals rather than for retail. We know that housing is a premium. In fact, here in Decatur, we do some things with affordable housing, and the county needs those kinds of things as well. So we can anticipate that property values are going to be... And it's the desirable places to live, and other cities are attractive places to come to. So we're looking to watch and see what we do.
Just, Mr. Anderson, just to be clear, that that three percent cap is just legislation under consideration and is not yet in place? And so, yeah, we're, and even if it were to be passed, it probably would not go into effect until, yeah, so I don't, that's not going to impact it.
Definitely, watch out for what's going on under the dome.
Yes, we do.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, for your visit to our board meeting today. The information that you provided will be invaluable to us as we are building our FY25 budget, and I look forward to seeing you again next year.
Certainly, so you're always welcome to come back if you're here from hell. We work with Russ Madison and the move all the time, and we will be sending out an invite to them sometime March eighth, because every year we do an annual training session on the digest, and so that all the citizens there will know what the time takes apart that we can go to the state. We have had, remind, ten years back, have never missed tax digest on time. Y'all fancy the stuff.
Yeah, I think that was the core question I had, is basically, when do we have a sense of what the impact of the Decatur area of taxes?
So we are looking to have Andrea Arnold come to our board meeting next month, and we are going to work together to really get our tax assessor here as well. So we've been working on that, so that is our next step, so that we would have both of those individuals here as we are looking at draft.
Right. We look at our schedule that will allow...
Thank you so much, State Attorney.
Yeah, I want to echo that. We can make it an annual occurrence, we hope. Yeah, for sure. Dr. Whitaker, want to introduce her next presentation?
I don't know why she's walking away because this is definitely the Dr. Broom.
I know why she is.
As you say. So Chair Hunden, Dr. Lomita Broom will present the five-year budget history and the preliminary FY25 draft budget.
Good evening once again. Today's presentation will provide a brief overview of the district's five-year financial history and a preliminary first draft of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. All budget decisions and requests tie into one or more of the district's strategic accelerators and have equity woven to do out. The two primary sources of revenue received by the district are local and state revenue. Local revenue is presented in dark blue and state revenue is in light blue. Local revenue consists primarily of local property tax receipts, but also includes tuition for the early childhood learning centers. Local revenue consists primarily of local property tax receipts, but also includes tuition for the early childhood learning centers, revenue received from school bus, stop, form channels, earnings on investment, surplus sales, and other locally generated revenue. State revenue consists of funded earns by the quality-based education act, also referred to as QPE, which was in accidental loss by the Georgia General Assembly in nineteen eighty-five. The formula for determining QPE funds is based on multiple factors, including student enrollment, learning abilities of students, scheduling, and grade kindergarten through twelve, and training and experience of staff. There are also state grants that fall under state revenue. As shown, the district receives its largest source of revenue from local sources. Local sources have steadily increased from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-three. State revenue has slightly increased. State revenue is tied directly to student enrollment, and therefore, as enrollment decreases, so does funding. The district enrollment decreased from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one by about fifty-five students, and decreased from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two by approximately one hundred and fifty-four students. Enrollment from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three increased by eighteen students. District expenditures are shown by function. All categories include operational costs, salaries, and benefits applicable. The category shows that by far the biggest district investment is in instruction, which aligns with strategic accelerators, student success, and all areas. Instruction makes up an average of sixty-three percent of the general fund budget. The instruction function includes activities revealing directly with the interaction between teachers and students, including the salary and benefits of teachers and instructional material purchased for learning. The second largest expenditure function is maintenance and operation, which makes up an average of nine percent of the general fund budget. Maintenance and operation are activities concerned with keeping the facilities open, comfortable, and safe for use, including keeping the ground, buildings, and equipment in effective working condition in state of repair. The category also includes maintenance personnel. Considering that the district's facilities, with the exception of tallying days, are an average of seventy-eight point three years old, it is not surprising that maintenance and operation. The third largest expenditure category is school administration, which makes up an average of eight percent of the general fund budget. School administration functions are activities concerned with the overall administrative responsibility for school operations, including our activities of principals, assistant principal, instructional coaches, school clerical staff, and general office supplies. Attached in the appendix of this presentation is a summary definition of each function category. This slide compares revenue and expenditures for the last five years. In two thousand and nineteen, revenue and expenditures were pretty aligned. And since the year twenty, expenditures began to outpace revenue and continued through twenty twenty-one. As you may recall, the COVID pandemic began in fiscal year twenty twenty and continues to have a major impact on expenditures through twenty twenty-one. The district began to recover in fiscal year twenty-two and have continued to rebuild the district's reserve, our fund balance, with revenue outpacing expenditures. During times like a pandemic, having a healthy fund balance is critical for survival. The military rate history varies based on the economy and financial needs of the district. The military rate increased in twenty nineteen from eighteen point fifty-six to twenty point twenty-five. With the onset of the pandemic, the military rate increased in twenty twenty-one from twenty point twenty-five to twenty-one. The Board of Education increased the military rate in twenty twenty-four from twenty-one to twenty point. The fund balance history is a reflection of the previous slide of revenue and expenditures. As shown, the fund balance dropped drastically from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one as a result of the pandemic. The district has been disciplined of the tax payer's fund, as you can see, by the gradual increase in fund balance. The five-year history of tax levies lists the tax digest value, which Commissioner Irving just spoke of. As shown, real property in the district has steadily increased for the past five years. The military rate is a percentage of the net tax digest. If the digest increases and the military rate remains the same, the district will see an increase in revenue due to the digest growth. This is the fiscal year twenty-four budget from board adoption in May twenty twenty-three to present. Since the board adoption of the fiscal year twenty-three budget, Budget Amendment One decreased revenue by point nine ninety-five percent and expenditures by one point nineteen percent. Budget Amendment Two increased revenue by one point seven nine percent from the original budget and increased expenditures by two point two six percent from the original budget. John in the box to the right under fund balance, since board's adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four original budget, the beginning fund balance has increased from the projected amount of nine point four million dollars to the audited amount of fourteen point nine million dollars, which is an increase of thirty-six point nine percent, and primarily to receive an increased revenue from the tax digest, local sources, and vacant positions. After Amendment Two, it is projected that the revenue will exceed expenditures by twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, resulting in a projected fiscal year twenty-four end of fund balance of fourteen point nine million, or fourteen point nine percent. This slide is a snapshot of the current fiscal year twenty-four budget and actual revenue and expenditures as of January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The district has received seventy percent of the budget revenue due primarily to receiving eighty-eight percent of local property tax revenue. The district has expended forty-seven percent of the budget expenditures, which is normal for this time of the year. Based on where we were as of January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four in the budget, fiscal year twenty-four projection is that approximately eight hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars in additional revenue will be received from local property taxes and other local revenue. Based on the spending tatters and vacant positions throughout the year, it is projected that approximately two million dollars may be under spent in expenditure. Ten vacant teacher positions throughout the year would equate to approximately one million dollars. If the projections were to be correct, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four end of fund balance, as shown in the bottom table to the right, would increase from fourteen point nine million to approximately seventeen point seven million dollars. Again, these are just projections, and as we get closer to the end of the year, suggestions will be revised to reflect, reflect more accurate answers. One of the board's primary priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-five was the competitive compensation package. Ms. Walker presented the board with the results of the compensation study at November's board retreat. Based on the board's discussion, option five and option seven were two of the preferred compensation packages. Five has a fiscal impact of approximately two point six million for salary and benefits, and includes a five point eight percent salary increase for teachers, a five to eight percent salary increase for teachers, and an increase in teacher entry level scale from fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars to fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars. Additionally, non-teaching positions will be allocated a five percent salary increase.
Very, very quickly before we jump off of this, that five percent salary increase from non-teaching positions, if my memory was right, is about a one point four million-ish impact. So option five with both the teacher and non-teacher is what, three, four?
I think four.
Almost four, you write about four, okay.
And seven has a fiscal impact of approximately four point six million, million dollars for salary and benefits, and includes a five to fifteen percent salary increase for teachers, and an increase in teachers' entry level scale from fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars to fifty-seven thousand dollars. Additionally, non-teaching positions will be allocated a five percent salary increase. And the fiscal year twenty-four budget, if, if the fiscal year twenty-four budget came in exactly as projected, as shown in the second column titled fiscal year twenty-four budget, revenue would exceed expenditures by twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, as shown highlighted in blue in the small box on the top right under the fiscal year twenty-four budget column. The fiscal year twenty-four end of fund balance will be approximately fourteen point nine million dollars. Be mindful that the fiscal year twenty-four end of fund balance is the fiscal year twenty-five beginning fund balance.
Do you, do you want me to wait till the end, or should I ask questions?
Yes.
You get along.
No, we're not.
I have one more.
Okay.
Um, this does not, however, include the potential one point nine billion of under spending in this particular year that we may have. I know we're not guaranteeing that, but there is a chunk of money that we may come in under this year.
And looking at the fiscal year twenty-five budget for option five and option seven, the budget was built on the assumption that revenue would remain the same. Local property tax, other locals, and QPE would remain constant with no change. As we process through budget season and the governor solidifies the state budget and the tax assessor provides the projection on the tax digest growth, revenue will be updated to reflect the change.
May I ask it? I'm sorry, and I appreciate your patience. This is the first time I've done this. Um, does, so this preliminary option five or seven includes the increased healthcare?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then, when you were mentioning the ten vacancies, that was hypothetical to the fact that if we have vacancies by the end, that would be additional money. And then, I don't know if this even needs to be answered right now. I'm just trying to figure out, like, I'm looking at instruction. I know that's mostly salary and benefits material. What accounts for such a discrepancy between improvement of instruction and instructional staff training? And I don't know if you can answer that, or if we need to, as a board, look at that, because I look at it and I'm kind of confused. I know we've made a priority for staff to be trained. I'm just trying to figure out, what are we spending the money on?
What are we spending the?
And why, why would, yeah, and that's probably my fault. I just don't understand. Improvement of instruction, in my mind, coincides with instructional staff training. And the instructional staff training is such a little amount.
There, there's, so when you're building the budget, when you're creating, um, each one of those different codes, we can only use certain things in certain places. So say, for example, improvement, improvement, um, instruct, instructional staff training, there are, there's only specific items we can utilize for that, and it's very small in comparison to the broader function code of instructional.
Improvement.
Improvement on instruction.
And then may I ask one other, so support services, what does the central mean next to support services? That's the central also.
Okay, thank you. Expenditures reflect salary enhancements as it does in the options, and staff increases for eligible employees. Option five will result in a two point seven percent increase in expenditures, as shown on the bottom row highlighted in yellow. Option seven will result in a five percent increase in expenditures. The top right op titled fiscal year twenty-five, option five, shows the beginning fund balance of fourteen point nine million, which is again the end of fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four, with option five expenditures exceed revenue by approximately three point nine million, which, which means the three point nine million will be deducted from the fund balance and leave a projected fiscal year twenty-five end of fund balance of eleven million. Whenever expenditures exceed revenue in a budget, this is considered deficit budget. Option five will result in deficit budget. Option seven listed in the second column would also result in considering six point three million dollars would be required to be deducted from the fund balance. Additionally, if the governor elects to give certain job category salary increases, the district will be responsible for covering the salary increases for other employees in that same job category that is not covered. For example, if the district has four hundred and fifty-nine teachers and the governor gives three hundred and fifty-six earned teachers two thousand five hundred dollars salary increases, the district will be responsible for funding and sustaining one hundred and three teachers, two thousand five hundred dollars salary increase. If additional revenue is needed, the only source that is available to increase would be property taxes. Currently, the district's military rate is twenty point three. Increasing the military rate by one mill would generate an additional two point nine million in revenue. Any questions before I go to the next slide?
Uh, I could, just a couple of quick comments, right? Um, so I would want to make clear to the public that we are not proposing a deficit budget here. This is just for us to get familiar with the beginning numbers. Um, I, for one, would not support a deficit budget, and so, um, would want us to see us hold the line on that, um, fund balance. Uh, a couple of things haven't come in yet, right? So obviously, our digest is going to grow, so that when we talk about, um, increased, potentially increased taxes, it's not necessarily an adjustment to the military rate. It may just be, uh, allowing and acceptance of some of the growth in the digest that we would take. Um, but in effect, we are, if nothing changes, that option five is approximately one point four mils that we're talking about, and option seven is a point five, two point five-ish mils impact. And so that, I think, should be very clear to the community that, um, we are talking about a, a, uh, impact to the budget of a significant amount in order to fund these teacher positions, uh, and, and that is a community, a public conversation.
Sorry, I don't quite understand your last comment. I'm, I'm trying to figure it out. I know you want, you're talking about the community understanding it, but what do you mean specifically when you talk about funding these teacher positions?
That, that we are at, if nothing changes.
Yeah.
Right, if nothing changes and there aren't extra positive money found, we are talking about a three point nine or a six point three million dollar tax increase.
Yeah.
That the public needs to be comfortable with. Um, and, and I do certainly, at least option five, support option five, but that is a three point nine million dollar tax increase. The public should be aware of that.
And to that end, then, only we're doing our board assessment earlier. My understanding is in terms of this budget, we're probably not going to be able to have that kind of student outcome stuff. So to your point, you know, we're telling the public, hey, you might have this additional money to spend, because that's what we want. Is there any way to move that into something other than this is the budget?
I'm.
I don't, okay.
Yeah, I don't totally understand the question.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we looked at the, uh, STAR data earlier, right? And we see needs for improvement, correct, for students? And we're looking at our expenditures, and we spent more money last year, correct? It's, so that's all I'm getting at, or in addition to, you know, the public. All right, I just showed up, so stop me when, uh, you know, I'm getting over my head and I need more, um, learning. But I think the understanding is we want to compensate our employees. That's a non-negotiable, right? We want to make a competitive salary. At the same time, we're focusing on student outcomes in a way that is emerging to be somewhat new. We look at our change model. So is there a way, as we move forward with the public, to institute some level of monitoring with the budget or some level of KTI's for student outcomes for this particular budget? Maybe it's a rhetorical question for now, more than an answer for one.
Well, I, I think, I think we, we are, though, I mean, we, we are putting forward metrics for student outcomes that we're going to be tracking over the next year. If you're suggesting that we want to tie specific dollar amounts that we spend to those specific student outcomes, I think that's the ROI-based model that Dr. Whitaker was talking about, that isn't going to be ready this year, but that we're going to try to mature the systems to get us to. Um, but, but certainly, I, I think all of us are committed to saying we're going to track this beta, and we do expect to see movement over this next year on, on student outcomes.
And I think that we are being intentional, whereas we didn't even have a strategic plan before, being intentional about lining up our spending with our strategic plan. So that we're not just saying, oh, this sounds like a good idea, that it, that this.
Yeah.
Money is directly lined up with our, um, priorities.
Fiscal year twenty five budget highlights include an increase in TRS from nineteen point nine eight percent to twenty point seventy eight percent. The increase was built into option five and seven. Unfunded state mandates increase in health benefits of three thousand per non-certified employee. Governor's state budget fiscal impact is unknown. No reduction in force. Maintain fund balance between four fifteen percent. The budget was built using a zero-based budgeting process. Every single organizational request had to be justified. An exit rate of one hundred and forty five per pupil expenditures was allotted to the school. This budgeting approach resulted in four hundred seventy five thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars savings in operational costs. The budget includes a ninety thousand dollar instructional reserve, minimum of five percent salary increase for all employees, and staff decreases for all eligible employees. Additionally, under Dr. Whitaker's leadership, the district has collaborated and coordinated with governmental officials, such as the tax commissioner and the city manager. The budgeting process began in November and has been ongoing since this time. The next step will be the presentation of the preliminary budget draft, presentation number two, in March. The appendix consists of the state's various function categories with a description for each.
And I will say that that is where you will find the descriptions of what can be utilized for each one of those function codes that were on that slide.
I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification. Thank you.
Um, so the other thing that we are doing this year is ensuring that our scheduling lines up to maximize QBE. But as I understand, that will be a next year's budget impact. So even though we're going to make the adjustments this year, we won't actually earn that benefit in the following year. But that also, uh, is effectively free revenue that offsets some of these increases that we're talking about. It's just going to be a year delay. That's correct. Um, okay. What, I, I know we don't, we may not, I'm not sure if it showed up in your revenue slide, but did we have a sense of in prior years, what the ratio of real property versus new construction? That, I, you know, I ask every year for this ratio, just to get a sense of how much of this is actually, how much of the digest growth is going to be the result of a homeowner that is in their home paying incremental taxes versus something like new construction that, that is also basically free?
We're trying to get with the tax assessors to get information for this.
Yeah, so as, um, Mr. Johnson said earlier, in order to produce the budget, we do need to bring in the assessor in addition to the commissioner, in addition to the city manager, to get us to a point where we can really understand that top box of revenue, of revenue. Um, that's the best way to build the budget, and we're getting there. We're getting there.
The numbers you have on the slide fourteen over on the right were the options and the projected ending fund balance. I'm correct, it's eight, eight percent.
This is the projected ending fund balance?
Yeah, it was slide four.
No, you passed it.
Yeah, go back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, the option five, option seven.
Oh.
With the mill on the bottom. No, you're going the wrong way. You're going the wrong way. Yeah, there we go. Keep them, keep them.
There you go. There you go, right. So we expect, you clarified that. We expect fourteen point nine.
It's the budget. They can spend everything in the budget actively.
Okay, so is that?
Well, the fourteen point nine is the beginning fund balance.
Correct.
For this fiscal year.
For this fiscal year. Um. So am I correct in that option five then would be overspending what we bring in by three million?
Option five, if we went with option five, we would get the three point nine million from the fund balance. Overspend deficit budget bill. But again, this does not include the increase in revenue. So this is kind of a worst-case scenario.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So, Tom kind of said it, I just wanted to say. So when I'm looking at it, is this scary, right? Because you're telling me we're going to bring in three or six million less? And then if we were to go with option five or seven, where, can you list the ways where that's not necessarily negative? Like, revenue should go up based off of tax digest, which we just heard of. What else? But that's not it. What else?
You'll have to look at all of it. QBE also, it likely will be a life increase QBE.
Okay.
Charity, I wonder.
On a basis.
Mm-hmm. But at the end of the day, we're still going to have to pull something out of the fund balance.
I'm sorry, I have to pull.
No, no, no. We may, or we may talk about taking a tax increase. That's exactly what we're.
Considering we're not, we're most likely going to have funds to go after Oprah from fiscal year twenty four from basic position area. So.
Yeah.
If we do, I don't anticipate.
So when you say worst case, because I want to make sure, we get no more additional money from anywhere than we did, and then we just spend this, basically, we got to find the three million. So what I, I would like to see, as we finalize this, as we close it, as we go in, is where is that three going to come from next year and then years moving forward?
First of all, it's four.
Five to one month by year.
It's four, right? We need to find four million.
Three point nine, yeah.
Three point nine.
And, and this is where, uh, this is where I'm, just the, the, this is why I was wanting to make it clear to the public. This isn't actually budget.
Right.
We are just looking at options with a worst case if nothing else shows up. Other stuff is going to show up. One of the things that's going to show up is a larger digest. The larger digest, however, is a tax increase, and so we shouldn't respite a tax. Um, but there are a number of other things that aren't a tax increase that are also going to show up, including, while not in this year's budget, a significant chunk in next year's budget of adjusted QBE that we're going to earn based on changes we made from this year. And so that's where, James, I think I was saying, um, I don't want to see us fund it out of fund balance. I would want to see us fund it out of other revenue options.
But James, I'm sorry, no, you finish.
I was going to say, including if that chunk of money comes in next year, we're talking about actually reducing the mileage even more because we've pulled in, if I remember correctly, we're talking about one and a half million or so dollars of increased QBE funds.
But to James' point, this does look scary. This looks like, you know, this is just for FY twenty five. You have to be able to sustain this year over year. And, you know, you're already talking about some adjustments to what the predicted tax digest could be. So that's where I think to your original point, that's a conversation to have with the public. You know, is this something that, you know, in looking at these two options, that we're saying in house, we sustain it, you know? We could go through, we should and we will, but every year and figure out where there is money to be had in the budget. But then.
Right.
We have to be able to sustain it year over year.
The, the basic question to the public is, are you willing to countenance a tax increase to pay our teachers as one of the top destinations in the metro area? And that's the basic question.
You just mean a tax digest increase, not a mill increase, right?
Well, we don't know yet, but yes. Well, I mean, likely, given the rate at which the tax digest has grown, probably that's going to be sufficient. But a homeowner doesn't care. The math is the same. If we need one and a half percent more budget to cover this, it's going to be a one and a half percent difference a year in taxes.
One way of it happening.
One.
Can I just clarify that with regard to these options? So it's an all or none package for option five or option seven? Okay.
And to be, to be clear, I was not trying to be pessimistic about these, these options. I just want to be very clear on like, all right, we now know. We got to find either four million. You, you would have it up there, I don't have it up here. Or we got to find it. We've heard great presentations on like rearranging the bell schedule, creates more QBE, zero budgeting, does some stuff. We just heard from, you know, uh, the tax commissioner that the digest will, will go up. Tom confuses some people, but he is correct, that when the tax digest goes up and your tax bill shows up and your house is worth more, you got a tax increase unless we lower it, which is why you also asked the new construction question, which I think is lost on a lot of people, only insofar as new construction fills in that gap. And then, so like, I did not get a tax increase last year. My assessment didn't go up. I probably will this year, so then.
You're going to have people who are pitching for something waiting on you just.
Correct.
And this, this column here, this FY twenty five, five and seven, this includes all of the staff who are getting a five percent raise plus the adjustments for increased salaries. So this is all staff, not just teachers, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And Scott posed a question about to the community, you know, what are they willing to do? And I just want to get some clarification on, you know, how they, how the community would give their input. And so we will have hearings after we finalize the budget. So they, I guess they could come during public comment. There's also a link on the website, so if you go forward, um, one slide, or actually probably two. It's one. Yeah, no, the other way. Yeah. So community input on budget priorities, and that's one online, and there's a link on the district's website, so.
For budget feedback.
For budget feedback. So now that the preliminary, uh, draft is out, if you will, the community can feel free to engage by giving us the, the feedback in that way.
What's, what's really important here for the community to know as well, and this is, uh, I'm commending Dr. Broom and Dr. Whitaker and the entire team on this. Uh, it is actually very clear, we're not talking about gobs and gobs of stuff going into this budget that are not here. We are talking about salaries for teachers. This is the increase that we're talking about. We have been able to cut out everything else. We've cut a significant amount out of this budget. Um, and any of the puts and takes that we're talking about are already funded within, uh, the things that we've been able to cut. The increase that we're talking about in this year's budget, which would be potentially an increase impact, are all going to teacher salaries, really. And that's what we're saying. And so it's, it's a pretty straightforward conversation to have with the community. And, uh, I mean, I'm sold on it. I, I, I think that we need to be doing this, but I, I just want to make sure that we hear from the community about it.
And, and to comment point, not just teachers, but.
Staff.
Staff that contributes to the whole experience for our students.
Absolutely.
And it's to have four dozen of budget feedback links on the website, on the finance page.
Hmm.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you so much, uh, board, for all of your feedback today. Um, we know that we will come next month with a second draft based upon the feedback that has been received.
May I ask, but then when was the link to the budget feedback? Um, how long has that been active? How long will it be active?
It stays on the website.
Okay. So it's been there for a while?
We just updated it once. We started with the fiscal year twenty five budget. We updated, so they can give feedback throughout the year. Thank you.
Right, so, good evening, everyone, and happy Black History Month. Uh, Frederick Douglass actually passed away today, February twentieth, in eighteen ninety five, at the age of seventy seven. He was known as a reformer, an abolitionist, um, also an orator and saint. One of the most notable quotes is, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." And the majority of my superintendent's comments tonight will focus on how we will strengthen our equity work by building strong children. My core beliefs have been echoed from this seat already before. Number one, equity is the vehicle to excellence. By equity, I believe in providing the support to ensure that there is not a predictor of student outcome, whether those outcomes are academic or affective. Number two, leadership matters. Leadership identifies the barriers to those outcomes, and they strategically think through the solution. They employ change management strategies to implement those solutions. And number three, engagement inspires. The engagement comes from our staff, all of our students, all of our community as we implement the All in the Cater Strategic Plan. These core beliefs have, are underscored by a system where we build the capacity of our adults in order to sustain positive outcomes for all students. At the conclusion of my first ninety days here in CSD, I posited three key findings, which we must address to sustain positive outcomes for students. Number one, coherence, instructionally, obviously, and then also through the governance structure, from our policy to our regulation, ultimately to our practice. And then number two, capacity building through business functions and organizationally in our instructional infrastructure. And number three, the clarion call for all, and that means all students. Our equity work has been good work, but it can be great work when we put the structures in place to ensure all means all. Over the past few months, few months, we have taken a deep dive into our Math scores, into our STAR data, and even also into our milestone data. We have looked into our college and career readiness performance index data, and one of the indicators of that CCRPI is at or above grade level for reading. Typically, districts count being at or above grade level reading for elementary students as a key indicator of success. Essentially, we are in the business of teaching children to learn how to read and then reading to learn. But what does it mean when we have students who are in tenth grade and their percentage of reading at or above grade level is at thirty eight point four six percent? On this slide, the first four high schools are deemed schools like mine as they have similar economically disadvantaged percentages and race, ethnicity makeup. All have significantly higher percentages of economically disadvantaged students reading at or above grade level. The next high school has a very similar economically disadvantaged student percentage as DHS, with a performance that is slightly higher than ours. Finally, I mean significantly higher than ours. And then finally, you see schools with significantly higher percentages of students that are ED and buildings that are not as resourced as ours with outcomes that are higher than ours. This sort of data compels this administration to think about what these students, the sixty one percent who do not read at grade level, will do when I hand them a diploma in eighteen months. What will we do to have, to not have socioeconomic status, race, gender, or even neurodiversity or any other type of designation as a predictor of success? We must strengthen our equity work, and we will do that in three ways. Number one, become more student-focused. Number two, provide greater degrees of support for teachers. And number three, optimize the leaders effectively. And number three, optimize the leader's effectiveness. Two key partners will assist us in becoming more student focused. One goal in communities and schools, schools. One goal is an elective course taught in the eleventh and twelfth grades at DHS. This course targets students with a two-point-oh to a three-point-one GPA, free and reduced lunch eligible, first-generation college students who are from traditionally marginalized communities. The identity-affirming post-secondary access and success curriculum ensures that our students are advised and progress monitored through their pursuit of diverse college or even technical school and/or even career path through a minimum of three years. That is right. Support goes through their first year of post-secondary education. The second partner, communities and schools, will provide student caseload support in the areas of attendance, academics, school behavior, and end-of-status, which means promotion, retention, graduation, or even drop-off. The students served will be at DHS, Beacon Hill Middle School, Tally Street, and also Claremont. I will save the remainder of my comments about CIS for our board retreat on Tuesday next week, because we will have a representative there actually to present to the board. Number two, we must provide greater degrees of support to teachers to teach all students. One of the partnerships that will be integral to supporting teachers launched on January third this year, CT three. Through a workshop of no-nonsense nurturing, staff began the process of collective efficacy building regarding relationships and replacement behaviors for students. This learning has received unsolicited praise by long-serving CSD staff and administrators, and has also led to CT three creating a school bus driver addition for this learning. The second strategy is not a partnership, but a focus on professional learning, as it will become a part of the duties and responsibilities of our equity director. Finally, we must optimize our leader effectiveness. Two key university partnerships will assist us in differentiating and aligning our support to ensure necessary urgency, capacity building, and define flexibility in CSD. The first partnership is through the University of Virginia Partners and Leaders for Education. This program is a combination of Darwin School of Business and Curry School of Education. Select school leaders and district staff will engage in executive education over the next two and a half years. You will have the opportunity to find out more about the UVA PLE partnership next week, as they too will present at our board retreat. And then finally, the last partnership is in its finalization stage. CSD will have a Harvard Graduate School of Education doctoral resident next school year. CSD will provide the resident with various opportunities to engage in internal strategic initiatives on which they are actively focused. The resident is expected to have the opportunity to lead at least one major project on behalf of CSD, such as the creation or the implementation or even the evaluation of a. The resident reached out to me with an interest in being matched with CSD due to our focus on equity, the All in Decatur Strategic Plan, and the optimal location being in the Alanson Metropolitan area. The preliminary draft of the FY twenty-five budget includes the funding of all of these partnerships, the outcomes approach to equity, ensuring all does truly mean all. And let us not forget the words of Frederick Douglass, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." Also, as a part of my gym plan, I committed to listening sessions. So, the winter round of the listening sessions will occur over the next two weeks, February the twenty-first at five-thirty at Oakhurst, and February the twenty-seventh at five-thirty at Beacon Hill. March first, I will hold one virtually. And the most recently added addition to ensure maximum participation from our CSD staff will occur on early release day. So, February the twenty-eighth, from two to three PM. And of course, that would be virtually. So, Chair Herndon, before ending my remarks, I must take a moment to address two topics that have recently emerged. The first one is about the adjustment time of specials, but specifically Spanish at the K-two level. The science of reading is a bedrock, actually the bedrock of early literacy. As we move to become a science of reading school district, we must make adjustments to the K-two schedule to allow ample instructional time for all the components of reading instruction, that is the five pillars in addition to writing. Additionally, building academic knowledge requires explicit instruction in social studies and science. Another bedrock for the K-12 master schedule is PE, and it actually should be taught ninety minutes per week. Our K-two schools were below those state guidelines. Therefore, we have worked with our principals in the K-two schools to allow for adequate instructional minutes for our big rocks, while including all of our additional offerings that make our schools unique and special. Again, I know that the change in Spanish instruction at the K-two level has definitely been a topic of conversation for a lot of our families. And working to provide consistency across all of the schools, beginning next year, we, or we, meaning myself and Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Jennifer Burton, will ensure sixty minutes of Spanish instruction. Also, Mrs. Burton will be meet, meeting with our K-two Spanish teachers next week to find additional ways to incorporate Spanish throughout the school day. The second topic pertains to the HVAC unit or units at DHS. I want to reemphasize that staff and obviously student safety is paramount, paramount to the highest priority of CSD. And we are very aware of the recent disruptions caused by aging HVAC system in the main buildings at Decatur High School, which has resulted in multiple evacuations over the past month due to smells of gas and one actual leak. The HVAC system has exceeded its expected service life, resulting in more frequent breakdowns and malfunctions. Actually, the units have been in existence, have been in education. I want to reassure students, staff, and families that we are working currently to expedite the replacement of this equipment. The procurement process is currently being impacted by the infamous supply chain, but we also want you to know that it will require an extended break to replace six rooftop units with the use of crane. So, the best time to replace these units will be in the summer. In the meantime, we will continue to work with Atlantic Gaslight, Georgia Power, and Decatur Fire to monitor the unit and provide repairs as needed. Chair Herndon, that completes my report.
Excellent. I'm, I'm hearing a question over there, so I'm gonna open it up for that.
Um, yeah, so on, on both, both of the special topics, Dr. Whitaker, I think the first one, um, on the HVAC units, understanding that we're in the middle of, of supply chain challenges and understanding that, that, uh, I think we're still trying to find partners to help there. Uh, but my question, I think, is a little bit more basic, like, how do we get to a point, something like an HVAC unit should be in a capital plant replacement plan?
I agree.
And so, how do we arrive at a point where we'll well-tap the life of a piece of equipment that ought to have a standardized replacement schedule? And how confident are we that there aren't other pieces of equipment similar to that that are also a replacement schedule or might need to be looked at?
So, uh, that is a great question. I did ask a very similar question when I was told the years and the age of the unit. So, these units did go out for bid already, um, and we did not have anyone to raise their hands to replace. So, this has been something that has been ongoing, that Mr. Perez, our Chief Operations Officer, has been aware. Now, I have asked for it to be expedited and also to include, and next month is our operations update, for our annual operations update, which will include that entire capital life cycle, so that I can ensure that we do not have this issue across our other buildings. So, that is top of mind for me. Um, when I was told the age of the unit, and, uh, know that, and when I first toured the buildings with Mr. Perez, I was very impressed by the cooling towers, say, for example, that was at, I want to say that was at one on the park, can I say it?
The big one, yeah.
Yes, it was wonderful. But then, when I found out that, that is not what we had at Decatur High School, but also just the makeup of Decatur High School and the multiple buildings and the units and the aging of our schools, schools in general, I think the average age is, what, seventy-eight years? Yeah. It, so.
I think the capital plan should include things like roofs and the whole sprinkler system that we had at one on the park, for example, like, so, I just wanna make sure that we are comprehensive in that, so we don't find ourselves in this position.
Yes. Not only saying, stating what we have replaced, but more importantly, what needs to be replaced based upon natural life.
Natural life.
And when.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that will be a part of the annual operations update.
Just to follow up on the bid, is it just too soon to have gotten one, or is that an ominous sign?
I don't, I don't want to say what that might be. That's a, that would be a speculation.
The second, oh, sorry, did you have something about the?
No.
So, the second question was around Spanish instruction. I just wanna vocalize my perspective that I am, I'm disappointed in any sort of reduction in Spanish. I would far rather see other things reduced in, in time than, than that. I think Spanish is, particularly Spanish, but any foreign language is extraordinary value, uh, in, in so many other ways. And so, uh, I don't support frankly the reduction and would encourage strongly that we do find ways to claw back those thirty minutes that we're talking about in the other classes or in other areas where, you know, if we're, you know, if we're gonna do PE for ninety minutes now, can thirty extra of those minutes be PE in Spanish? I don't know, but I mean.
And that's.
I really, really, really wanna see us maintain a line on, on Spanish instruction.
Yes, that's one of the reasons why we're meeting with the K-two teachers, to talk about how you can incorporate it throughout the day. In addition, I want the community and also you to know, board members, that we did look at things such as crew, um, daily, two-time as well, as well as the larger, um, gatherings.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. So, this was something where we opened it up to the schools and the SLT to think through, and this is where they have decided to land. It's, the pieces around the science of reading and the explicit social studies and science were what we had to have. Once we put those pieces in the master schedule and the ninety minutes of PE, as it is a state requirement, we then adhere. Now, the SLTs, with the principals, did land where they landed, but now we're still continuing to talk to them about ways in which to incorporate.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Whitaker, can you please remind me, what does CT three stand for?
It's, it's not, that's the name of the company.
Okay.
It's literally CT three.
Okay. And, but can you say a little bit more about their training that, that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, no-nonsense nurture is, uh, it's a training that teaches, uh, teachers to have a collective efficacy around the way in which you build relationships with students and also building relationships with families. It also provides professional learning around the ways in which you redirect students who you are having a potential challenge with. It also teaches you how to, not do what I am doing at the moment, but to decrease your vocabulary, lexica, the number of words you are saying to explicitly redirect the student so that you are able to ensure that the replacement behavior is done. And so, that was part of the original, that's part of the learning that the staff engaged in, um, on January third. And like I said, we were on a school visit at one of the, the middle schools, and it was definitely not one of the middle school, senior school, and it was, uh, an unsolicited compliment to what that training provided, and truly just-in-time applicable strategies around redirecting teaching students. And so, uh, there, there are other things in their suite, uh, but to know that our, say, for example, our transportation department was a part of that training, and meaning just the supervisors, and they said, wait a second, we need to customize this same piece for our bus drivers so that students from the time we opened the door are hearing the same language, which to hopefully will minimize what would be those distractions, distractions to what would be out-of-school suspensions or in-school suspensions.
Is, is it kind of like a warm-demander approach to?
Somewhat, maybe.
And is that a ongoing training, or is this just a one?
There are other offerings in the suite, so no, no, no-nonsense nurture is a one-day workshop, but then they have other offerings that as a part of our potential programming for next year, we will be able to offer. So, say, for example, in pre-planning, if you're new to Decatur, you could take no-nonsense nurture as part of your onboard, onboarding, and, you know, to be a part of our district. But really, the professional learning and teacher support, that work will come together as we are identifying what are our larger big rocks inside of that three-twelve space.
Very quickly, what is the plan, which may be in terms of, for, uh, continue to have problems with this HVAC unit? Will students continue to have to evacuate, um, throughout the day? I don't think they can all fit in the gym. There's parts of the high school. So, Jim? I mean, Mr. Perez?
Exactly. And this is Decatur High School or in general?
Decatur High School.
So, related to Decatur High School, we have, um, like, as was mentioning, we do have a pretty, uh, comprehensive, uh, life cycle, and we do all of the equipment, including roofing, kitchen equipment, uh, intercom, you know, everything is in the building is through the life cycle, but I can't say nothing for the previous, I think, stranger, previous personnel out there wasn't really putting a lot of these things into the life cycles and replacing this small part of it. Like, I was replacing some compressors on equipment that passed twenty years that, you know, they're ready to approach. So, we put in a request for proposal for the replacement, we didn't get response. Uh, I guess it was massive, the way, and we tried to make it really simple, we include the specification and so on, but, um, what we're doing now is breaking down the whole thing just to see if we can replace the, the arduous first and then keep going and the other stuff, but we've replaced, as you're gonna see next month, we've replaced a lot of stuff, you know, but we still play catch-up. A lot of stuff, when your building is almost eighty years old, you have a lot of pieces of equipment that needs to be replaced on a regular basis, like John said, if you have a, a life cycle, you're gonna put it there, but you also have to allocate money for it.
I guess my direct question is, if this should happen again, should parents not be, or should parents expect that periodically, if, if any of the process, students may be evacuated into the gym and out of class, um, if this could potentially happen again? And I don't know if the entire population of DHS fits the gym, so are some people gonna be outside, or some people have to stay in the classroom potentially, so is that what parents are to expect, knowing that, I mean, it is what it is, we may not be able to fix the, the root of the problem until the summer, so just what they expect if this, if this should happen again?
What can I can say? We are doing some, uh, which is no ideal, no, but we are doing some, uh, extra maintenance in this equipment, replacing regulators and a lot of other things to avoid this to happen. It's a new school, but it really happened three times, which is not normal for that equipment, but maybe this time the equipment is just giving out, so we are doing, everything mostly is to avoid any other breakdowns.
I mean, I, I think I would say we would count as looking at replacing parts of the componentry to stop the gas leaks, even though we know we're gonna replace the entire thing over the summer. If we're spending twenty thousand dollars to replace whatever the parts are that are leaking now, even though we know we're gonna throw it out in the summer, that's fine, let's stop them. Right, I think that's clear, I think what we're trying to suggest, yeah. Um, and then the other thing, this came in as a question to us, uh, around whether this is a question of funding, I just wanna be clear, it's really not, I mean, this is a, this is clearly the kind of thing that both the reserves is for and the kind of thing that the SLOs funding helps cover. I mean, this is a capital, clearly a capital expense, so it really is not, let's just be clear with the community, it's not a question of us trying to save money here, we have the funds to be able to spend on correcting it. This is really a, a challenge to get the individuals in to actually do the, the repairing change.
And as far as, uh, our staff being, our staff or our students, when they are evacuating, as far as their location of being in the gym versus the outside and the numbers of students and that type of management.
These things are never easy, right? Um, in the last incident, in my communication with Principal School, we were asking if the gym was a safe space to evacuate, if there was an issue in the main building, and the fire personnel and the Atlanta Gaslight people permitted that. Um, moving forward, I guess we would need to ask, is that a general practice that we can use to avoid having to be outside? We have not asked that question. Um, we did in that particular incident, but we can definitely find out if that can be our go-to, knowing that it may be a potential issue again.
And know that, um, I did speak to Decatur Fire and that, and very much a layperson description to what I was told is, you know, you have a gas stove, and sometimes the pilot will go out, but gas is still flowing. That is essentially what is happening on the roof, but the process is just so much more massive because of how large everything is. Now, because those are two different buildings, meaning main Decatur High School versus where the students would be moved to in the gymnasium and the PAC, those are two separate buildings, which is why we are cleared to go into the PAC, but at the same time, not allowed to be in the main building. And so, that's where the coordinated effort between their flight, Decatur Fire, all of that has to happen so that before we are allowed to go back to main building.
I'm thinking ahead here, the best case is we're not gonna deal with this again, um, or we fix parts and it's once, it's a safety issue, but my mind's going to testing, um, AP, EOC, and that sounds like an absolute nightmare, so we'll get some plans in terms of.
Well, the great thing about it is, is once we get into that portion of the year, it's typically hot, so the heat will be off.
Okay.
Now, we need to have that air conditioner on, but, um, but that's a, realize, this is an issue that's being generated due to HVAC, meaning the H of it, meaning heat. So, by that time, you know, typically, it's fine.
Is it Atlantic Gaslight that has to do some of the repair?
No, we've got the, with the Atlantic Gaslight, we're doing the pressure test, just to confirm if no other leaks in the building.
So, then, is it, is it possible, again, like, this is really one of those things that the reserve is for, so I don't wanna say money is no object, but really, kinda needs to spend what we need to spend here. Is there ways to set up gas monitoring so we're not finding out because it's accumulated and it smells? Like, we can have a very, very early warning system so we have a repair person up there before it's even evident, so we're not having to call AGL or the fire department? I mean, like, what if that, surely equipment like that exists, we, and, you know, I have no problem overarching that as a, as a, as mine item.
Yes, so, talk about the morning.
Yeah, we have, uh, starting this before six AM every morning, testing the equipment. We do have our gas leak detectors, um, I even have one in my office, so we are, we are testing, we are checking, making sure there's nothing leaking. Uh, at this point, we are not expecting any new, but again, we are putting a lot of effort to replace all these, the minimum parts in our, part of the problem and trying to, uh, block and prevent any other breakdowns.
That's, that's new from this last time. Okay, so this is now, we've, we've actually, not just a matter of us trying to replace the equipment, we're actually doing an enormous amount of manual work to stay on top of it so that we actually get through the rest of the, yeah, got it.
The prevention side of it, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. I have a few chair comments, and try to keep them brief this evening. Uh, I wanna welcome all of our student, staff, and families back from what I hope was an enjoyable fall break. Uh, we appreciate the community being all in for CSD. Uh, like Dr. Whitaker, I wanna begin by acknowledging February is Black History Month, where we honor the triumphs and struggles of African-Americans throughout U.S. history. Uh, earlier this month, I know several schools also held a variety of activities for the Lunar New Year. Uh, we've had a very robust and informative meeting today. Uh, following our executive session, we had meetings, uh, with pre-work and work sessions consisted of discussions on the items, including a protocol to support us in drafting a nutrition policy. Uh, the board remains committed to providing healthy meal options for all students while working diligently to proactively prevent future debt reoccurrences. As we know, this issue is not unique to CSD. Uh, before the break, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, Dr. Whitaker, and I were invited to meet with the Cab County State Representative, Imani Barnes, uh, at the Capitol to discuss our recent school debt challenges and cur nutrition legislation, HB five, five-ten. Uh, we commend and fully support Representative Barnes for her efforts to guarantee funding for school breakfast and lunch meals for all of Georgia's students. Financial stability and sustainability remains an essential outcome to achieving our five-year strategic goal. As we continue through the FY twenty-five budget process, I wanna thank Tax Commissioner Urban Johnson for joining us. We look forward next month to a presentation by Andrea Arnold and the City of Decatur in strengthening our relationships and our efforts to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Lots of stuff to recognize, wanna thank the counselors for showing up, the celebration of the Beacon Hill Performing Arts, and a recognition of the twelve student leaders at Tally Street and their house system this evening, it was fantastic, and congratulations to all of our students and staff for their well-deserved recognition and commitment to excellence. Finally, I wanna remind everyone that registration for Decatur Education Foundation Tour Decatur is officially open. It's a five-k extravaganza that unites Decatur and all ages to raise funds so that all students have the resources and experiences they need. That concludes my remarks this evening. Fellow board members, do you have any other thoughts you would like to share?
Can you allow me to provide a link on our site to the registration for the Tour Decatur?
Sure, I, we can see if we can do that in the board report as well.
It's on, it's on there, yeah, it's right there, okay, great.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to shout out, uh, Beacon Hill Middle, I attended their Black History Month program, um, and it was outstanding, and, um, so, I'm chapping.
A little pride?
A little pride, a little pride.
Excellent, thank you. And our meeting with Representative Barnes was during the break, I've said before. We'll now move to consent agenda items, which include a school nutrition report, personnel report, monthly financial report, and an overnight out-of-state student travel. Dr. Whitaker, do we have the monthly financial report?
Yes, um, Dr. Imani de Barnes will present briefly the report.
Good evening. The December twenty twenty-three financial reports are located in Assembly Agenda. The general fund budget in December was approximately ninety-eight million prior to the midterm amendment. As of December, the district has collected fifty-six percent or approximately forty-three point five million dollars of the budgeted revenue year-to-date, which is in line with the percentage that was collected this time last year. December revenue collection and expenditures bring the district total general fund revenue collection to fifty-six point two million and total general fund expenditures to thirty-six point seven six. For the month of December, there is a surplus of approximately nine point eight million, which means the district expenditures for the month were nine point eight million less than the monthly revenue. The nine point eight million will be added to the fund balance, which is normal for this time of the year. Overall, year-to-date, there is a surplus of approximately nineteen point five million dollars, primarily to the larger feeder property tax collection. Last year, this time, the surplus was seventeen point three million. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year and accounts for the hefty fund balance of approximately thirty-four point five million dollars, which includes the uncharted beginning fund balance with the audited beginning fund balance of approximately fourteen point nine million. Tax receipt collection will begin to drastically decrease in February. December revenue for capital funds consists of five hundred ninety-three thousand and fifty-three dollars from earnings from investments, slot sits collection, expenditures total of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Revenue for slot sits are based on a one cent collection from Decatur County sales and are trending about seven percent or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than projected. The four hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars surplus will increase the fund balance. Year-to-date, expenditures have exceeded revenue by sixty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the current fund balance for slots is approximately seven point nine million. Grant funds consist of federal, state, and local grants. Year-to-date, the district has received four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars in grant revenue and expended nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars in expenditures. The Georgia, the district grants are reimbursement, meaning funds must be spent prior to then reimbursed. All grants will be budget neutral. Food nutrition revenue and expenditures are trending within the same range, range as previous year. Food nutrition revenue for the month of December was two hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, and expenditures were two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars surplus of revenue will increase the fund balance. Overall, school nutrition has received one point seven million dollars in revenue and expended one point three million, which leaves a surplus of three hundred ninety-one thousand and fifty-eight dollars. As of December twenty twenty-three, in one point eight million fund balance year-to-date, food nutrition is projected to spend three point three million dollars this just a year. If there are remaining funds in the fund balance at year-end, funds that are not restricted per grant requirements will be used to purchase food and supplies for the next school year. If there are no remaining funds at year-end, the general fund will be utilized to purchase the necessary food and supplies to support the school nutrition program. I want to reemphasize that school nutrition should be self-sustaining, should be a self-sustaining entity that operates independently without the support of general funds. It's been said, but I want to reiterate that school nutrition funds can only be used to finance the school nutrition program and cannot be used to pay bad debt. I know this has been a topic of great discussion locally and nationally for our school nutrition. This slide shows that the school nutrition bad debt dates back to the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year and has drastically increased each year. Previous administrations weren't aware of the bad debt, however, no action was taken. Though the bad debt was not incurred under the current administration, the current administration is committed to financial transparency and sustainability. And the U.S. Department of Agricultural Guidance document on school nutrition, Memorandum SP forty-seven dash two zero one six, clarifies the process of designated delinquent debt that has been determined to be uncollectible as bad debt. Subpart E, section two hundred point four two six of the same guidance document states that bad debt arising from uncollectible accounts and other claims are unallowable. Related collision costs and related legal costs arising from such bad debt after they have been determined to be uncollectible are also unallowable. Therefore, nonprofit school or food services account may not be used to cover costs related to the bad debt. Under this federal guidance, CSD's nutrition department is unable to utilize nutrition funds to address bad debt. As of February second, twenty twenty-four, nutrition bad debt of eighty-eight thousand dollars was paid out thanks to a generous grant from the Arby's Foundation. The board is in the process of creating a policy for school nutrition to prevent future bad debt and ensure financial sustainability. I would be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification if needed.
Hearing no questions, uh, do I have a motion to approve consent items listed in the packet, one through four?
I'm gonna move.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson makes the motion. Do I have a second? Second motion, any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor of passing consent items, school nutrition report, personnel report, monthly financial report, and overnight out-of-state student travel, please say aye.
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. We will now move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have people sign up?
One speaker.
One speaker, okay. All right, my rule, I have to read through this, and then we'll have you, okay? Following information is included in the board policy manual. Members of the public also acknowledge this info when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the opportunity to address the board. During public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the comment period begins, and new sewing will be asked to state their connection to CSD. To allow time for the board's other business, public comment will ordinarily be limited to one hour, twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, public comment period may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit is three minutes. Persons speaking will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual. Speakers should be courteous and professional; they are not to list complaints about personnel or individuals connected with district. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, cheers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. If any speaker begins to verge in the area of hate speech or defamation, I will ask the speaker to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the board. but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons representing public comment or speak to the substance during public comment. Instead, a member of the admin team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
Yes, the speaker is Munira Sharif.
Hello, my name is Munira and I'm co-president of MSA at Decatur High School. My colleagues weren't able to make it, so it's just me tonight. So I wanted to speak about CSD changing its equity policy and refusal to have Palestine represented in the model Arab League. And I take it upon myself to advocate for the people of Palestine who have been oppressed for decades on it. The same way I want somebody to advocate for my people who are struggling just as Palestine is in Palestine itself. When you talk about October seventh, it is important to put things into perspective and give context. It is extremely unethical to ignore the fact that Palestine has been under an illegal occupation for seventy-five years, seventeen-year blockade, and the people of Gaza deemed to be living in the world's largest open air prison. Prior to October seventh, Gaza was the third most densely populated area in the world, and now it is reversed just a couple of months later. The world has been blind to Palestinian suffering for far too long, ignoring the death and destruction going on in the area just because of Palestinian children paying the price. Their children know our children do not matter to you. I may not be a Palestinian in my blood, but I am by heart, we all are. They are my people. Most Palestinians are Muslims in the Muslim ummahwa, umahmin nations. If one part believes, the whole ummah suffered in Greece. I refuse to sit back and watch the erasure of the Palestinian people in the school. I refuse to stand by idly while the school takes anti-Palestinian actions. What message are we sending, brothers, to these Allah Palestinian representatives? We are essentially erasing a group of people and dehumanizing as if to say they are not worthy of being Israelites, as if they aren't allowed to exist. What message are we sending to our Muslims at DHS who see a reflection of themselves in children of Gaza? I am deeply disturbed and disappointed at this change in equity policy. And I would like to, like, I am deeply disturbed and disappointed at this change in equity policy and I want to like, kind of give, put things into perspective. So when we hear about apartheid, we often think South Africa, ignoring that many consider Israel to be an apartheid state. When we hear genocide, we say never again. But here we are, many of us denying what we refuse to see. Never again means never again for anybody. Twenty-eight thousand Palestinians are dead. No, not dead, murdered, murdered by the state of Israel. Here we are sympathizing with those who mercilessly kill children, men and women. We are sending out a message that Palestinian lives don't matter and that is extremely harmful. It hurts my heart to watch a genocide against my people play out. I believe that CSD should reduce this new policy and allow for Palestine to be represented in model UN Arab League. Palestinians deserve dignity and respect and I will not let anyone strip that away with something.
Thank you, Munira.
Thank you, Munira. All right. I'd like to thank Munira for taking your time to come speak with us this evening. As board members, it is incredibly important for us to hear concerns from our communities, our students. We'll take your comments into consideration. Future dates, the next school board meeting is March the twelfth at the Wilson Center. Again, we will follow the board cadence of beginning with the executive session. Also, we'll have our next board retreat on February twenty-eighth, starting at ten AM at seven sixteen.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, that's what I'm saying. That math makes more sense. Yes, next week, in the same place as the last retreat.
No, it's at seven sixteen West, which is right under the modest station around the corner from here.
Okay, that'll be a new one for me. Topics will include the strategic plan and partnerships to strengthen our equity work will be discussed. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-two PM.